Welcome to the February 6, 2024 council, regular council meeting. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Francois.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Wilk.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Darling.
Here.
Mayor Haskew.
Here. Okay, next on the agenda is a proclamation in honor of Black History Month and African American mental health wellness. And last time I decided there was too much to read. This time this is really important to me, so I'm going to read the whole thing. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate many achievements and contributions made by Black Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. Black History Month grew out of an establishment in 1926 of Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. Whereas the 2024 national theme Growth and Reflection ties in with the final year of the UN's International Decade for People of African Descent, the observance focuses on community, on learning, and taking action towards creating a more equitable and just society. Whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. Whereas the city of Walnut Creek continues to work toward being an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to the community, the state, the country, and the world. Whereas the city of Walnut Creek is proud to honor the history and contributions of the Black Americans in our community and supports the theme of honoring Black families who are part of our city landscape. Not even half done. Whereas the city of Walnut Creek is proud to honor the history and contributions of Black Americans in our community and supports the theme of honoring Black families who are, did I just read that one? Who are part of our city landscape. Whereas according to the National Institute of Mental Health and the National Alliance on Mental Illness, some mental illnesses are more prevalent in the Black American community as compared to other groups in the United States. Whereas mental health and substance use issues and the devastating impact of COVID-19 are among the leading causes of health challenges for Black Americans in our region. Whereas the city of Walnut Creek is committed to empowering Black American residents by promoting the benefits of mental health services through education, advocacy, policy development, raising awareness, and decreasing the stigma surrounding mental health. Whereas the city of Walnut Creek collaborates with local government agencies and community-based organizations to support the innovated A3 mobile crisis response housed in Contra Costa Health Services to expand resources enhancing mental health in the Black American community. Whereas the city of Walnut Creek supports and encourages the efforts made to create the Miles Hall Community Crisis Hub as an easily accessible regional contact center for people experiencing a mental health crisis. Whereas the city of Walnut Creek supports efforts for local organizations to honor those who have or are suffering from mental illness and supports efforts to strengthen families and their role in sharing history and shaping the future of our Black residents. And whereas the city of Walnut Creek hereby acknowledges the designation of February 15 as Miles Hall Day of Remembrance. Therefore, Ilwella Haskew, Mayor of the City of Walnut Creek, on behalf of the Walnut Creek City Council, do hereby recognize the month of February as Black History Month and further recognize the second week of February as African American Mental Health Awareness Week and offer support and hope for those in Walnut Creek's Black American community who are impacted by mental illness and honor our Black families. It was an honor to read that. And accepting this is Mary Taylor, and she has proven that she works hard for our community. She was a member of our DII committee, and she was, is now in the chief's community advisory committee, so stand there and I'll be right with you.
Okay, that's okay. You may need to catch your breath.
There we go, Mary.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for what you do.
Oh, thank you. And I actually read this when I was invited, and I was really touched by the wording. I think that the city really makes great efforts to try to support and be inclusive, and I'm very, very, very grateful and proud to be a resident of Walnut Creek. And I have with me Linda Elder, who's also from Rosmore, and she came with me to accept this. So thank you so very much to Mayor Haskew and all of the city council. Okay, thank you, and all the other people. Okay.
Thank you, Mary. Now on to the serious business of the election coming up, and it is my delight to introduce my friend Kristen Connolly, who is the Contra Costa Clerk Recorder and Registrar of Voters, and soon to have the happy joy of Valentine's Day.
Indeed. Thank you, Mayor Haskew, and Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. I ask for your indulgence. Councilmember Wilk has probably heard a version of this three times now. And, no, although if you want to come up, you can help, interactive, yes, thank you. Councilmember Silva, keeping him honest there. So, anyway, so if you, I'm going to, I'm going to skip over some points maybe that you guys have, are well, as well trodden ground, but I do appreciate valuable time on your city council agenda and by giving me the opportunity to make a presentation. You can ask questions. We can have a conversation, which hopefully is more meaningful members of the public who may be watching either here in the chamber or, or online. And so we, as I stand before you, we are 28 days away from the March 5 presidential primary, but there's no question, it's really election month because that's how the law works in California. So if you haven't received it already today or tomorrow, you should get your ballot. So yes, got your ballot? Okay, perfect, excellent. I want to point out a couple things for anybody who's listening. I don't know if you noted that there is a dark blue stripe on the outside of your envelope that's new. We worked with the Center for Civic Design as part of our Center for Elections Excellence Cohort, and we redesigned all of our envelopes to make them clearer, easier to read, plain language, and we wanted to brand them with our secure drop boxes. So the envelopes to return your ballot have a purplish mauve color, depict your descriptor, not unlike your tie, Councilmember Francois, without the, without the, yes, there you go, trying to help you out, sir. And so you have a jumbo newly rewrapped box on the front of City Hall, and so I took a picture on my way in because I really, there's so much love that has gone into every word in every language on your drop boxes. So you have two here at this, at City Hall, both a regular size and a jumbo, and just thank you for your partnership and for working with the County Public Works Department to get that installed. I know there's always a lot going on in Walnut Creek, and I sort of think it was, maybe somebody was going to install it the day after Thanksgiving. I was like, why are you going to the retail capital to install a jumbo thing on the day after Thanksgiving? But anyway, please call always when things like that come up. Okay, so let's dive in. We, our authority, right? We run fair, timely, transparent, accurate elections. That's what we're charged to do under federal and state law. But we also, Mayor Haskew alluded to Valentine's Day coming up. The other part of my job is running the Clerk Recorder Division. And actually, 50 of our 82 FTEs that were authorized for in our department work in the Clerk Recorder Division. And so we are charged with accurately maintaining, protecting, and preserving the official records for the county, and we also deal with all kinds of fun life events, births, marriages. We do not, if you need your divorce decree, go to the court, we're not going to have it. But, but we can either marry you first or marry you again. There's, under the law, you have to wait a couple days anyway. So, but we do have destination wedding events, one of which is coming up next week. So we'll be at the Cobra Museum in Martinez performing destination weddings for, for Contra Costa residents. I do think it's important, being early into Black History Month, and especially with that timely and thoughtful resolution that you just read, I am very happy that the Board of Supervisors saw fit to approve two of our Measure X proposals that were focused on diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. The first of which is to support a mapping prejudice project in collaboration with the University of Minnesota. We're going to be the first jurisdiction in California that collaborates with them using their tool that will help, that will create a map. Once we work with some volunteers at the National Park Service, it's kind of a very interesting collaboration, but we're going to be reviewing the public record for all illegal racial restrictive covenants so that we can redact that language and get it out of the public record. And what the University of Minnesota is going to do with us is develop a map of where those historical illegal racial restrictive covenants, where they are in our community across the county, because I think it will be a very important tool for our communities to better understand history here in Contra Costa. So I look forward to coming back and reporting on that to you and what, what we learn about Walnut Creek. So, and the other position, the other project that got funded is, we asked for two new positions in elections to be diversity, equity, and inclusion specialists for elections to help us serve under, under-registered, underrepresented, and language minorities across Contra Costa. And so those got funded. And so we're in the process of developing job descriptions and getting those, those folks identified, because we're very excited. So let's dive in. We are an award-winning, I'm tooting my own horn, we are one of just 16 jurisdictions across the nation to be a part of the inaugural Center for Elections Excellence Cohort. That came with $2 million of funding that we've been able to invest in cyber and disaster recovery and in what you'll start, be starting to see soon is a, is a countywide trust in elections campaign to help us fight through and recognize that the elections administration profession has been under assault for the last four years, and there's some repair that needs to be done. So we're excited that that grant funding allows us to do that. And we also have been recognized nationally for leading the 11-county Bay Area Votes Coalition, which is helping us. And the last point here is we're continuing to collaborate on new collateral. And so this is something that I shared with the mayor's conference, and I'm happy to make sure that these PDFs actually get to you if you want to share them throughout your networks. In early 2023, about 10 minutes after I got sworn into office, we had a meeting with all of the 11 counties and identified what were some key priorities in preparation for this presidential election. And two key themes that we wanted to work on is answering the question, how do I know my vote was counted? And why does it take so long? And so the result of this, working in collaboration with a very well-known group called the Elections Group, put this, put these together and hopefully will help tell that story for voters. So we have just over 700,000 registered voters here in Contra Costa. I'm going to just go ahead and skip this one because I want to get to Walnut Creek by the numbers, but I did want to mention, this is the first time in the history of the state of California where we are mailing a ballot to every registered voter in a partisan presidential primary. And that actually is incredibly complex because we have lots of different parties, and we have lots of different ballots, and so many different ballot types. I'm so grateful to our voting systems team that spent a lot of time on represencing to clean up the lines in the census and do the things we weren't able to do before the 22, the 22 election. And so it's just important, and the reason that I've highlighted on this partisan breakdown of what your registered voters look like in the city of Walnut Creek, and I know you guys probably know this better than I do as, as the elected city council members, but 20.5% of the registered voters in Walnut Creek are designated as no-party preference voters. And so the way that a partisan primary works is that those voters, unless they tell us to do something different, will receive a ballot that does not have presidential candidates on it. Now, thanks to some legislative changes that happened in Sacramento in 2023, we have a, a former Santa Cruz clerk is now the chair of the Assembly Elections Committee. And so in one level, which it's awesome, we have one of ours. Occasionally, it's like, oh, what is Gail doing? When there's things that are proposed, but very, very experienced clerk at the helm there. And one of the changes was that we are required to put explicit instructions on the no-party preference ballots so that even if they ignore the postcard we mail in advance, that when you get your ballot and you're one of those voters, you know how you could request a ballot with presidential candidate on it, candidates on it if you like. Did want to mention, we have 14 volunteers from Walnut Creek that have committed to help with the presidential primary, but, and that your, your biggest turnout of in-person voting in November 2022 happened at Faith Christian Fellowship with just under 500 voters. So this is the postcard we mailed to 156,000 no-party preference voters across Contra Costa in mid-December. You know, there's nothing else coming in the mail to them. Unfortunately, we've only heard back from 8,000. So I should say thank you to the nearly 8,000 NPP voters who got back to us in response. But there's a huge gap, right, between 156,000 and 8,000. And that's why I'm excited to be here and hope you can help us get the word out. So if a no-party preference voter is interested in voting in one of these three parties, the Democratic Party, the American Independent Party, or the Libertarian Party, they can request what's called a crossover ballot. I did not make up that word, but that is what it is called. And what that means is that those voters would receive a ballot that has the presidential candidates for those parties, but it will not have the county party committee candidates on it. Just a little distinction. There are three political parties that have decided to do something different, and they require no-party preference voters to reregister as a member of that political party. So that's the Republican Party, the Peace and Freedom Party, or the Green Party. Those are the rules for those three committees. Just going to go out on a limb here and say, it would be easier for voters if all the rules were the same, but as election administrators, it's not up to us. These are the laws on the books, these are the choices those parties have made, and we need to implement them. So we're, my message to you here is that for those voters that are going to get a ballot without any presidential candidates on it, we can get them a new ballot if they contact us, our phone number and our email are on this slide. But also, we are in a position, because of the technology that we've invested in, in our poll pads and how we organize things, we can serve those voters any day, if, this month, if they want to come, any weekday to my office at 555 Escobar, we're doing early voting. We had the machines up and ready to go on Monday. People were not knocking down our doors yet, I'm not going to lie. I don't know that we've had a single in-person voter yet, but we're ready. We've even redesigned it, it's very, it's very cool, if you want to come visit, if you want to come vote. So early voting's happening in our office, and then we are grateful that early voting is happening here. I included this just because I look pretty tall in it. I did a whole podcast about no-party preference voters. It's my friend Evelyn at the Santa Clara County Voter Registration Office, and she invited me down, and we spent about 14 minutes doing a cool, we spent more time, but the, the episode itself is about 14 minutes talking about all this stuff. But we are grateful that you are doing in-person voting here, starting on Friday, March 1, continuing on Saturday, and then on Monday before Election Day on Tuesday. So thank you for working with us on that, again, between the ballot boxes and being an in-person voting location, you'd be hard pressed to find a local jurisdiction in the county that's doing more to support what we're doing than Walnut Creek. So, so thank you very much. And then you'll note the Dropbox locations that you have, in addition to what you have here, there's a Dropbox on Oak Grove, and there's one in, on Tice Valley. So that's, there are lots of ways for people to drop their ballots off, but if any of those NPP voters want to walk in, surrender their ballot, and be issued either a crossover ballot, or if they want to reregister in that moment, they can vote provisionally for those three parties, and there's a few checks, little hoops they have to jump through, but those votes will count. We are set up to take provisional voter registration at all of our polling places.
Before you move on from this slide, can we clarify that 1666 North Main Street is here at City Hall?
Yes.
Front door and back door?
Yes, we got two of them, the jumbo and the regular.
The 2661 Oak Grove Road is the Ignatio Valley Library.
It is the Ignatio Valley, indeed.
And the 2100 Tice Valley Road is Grace Presbyterian Church.
There you go. See? Thank you, Councilmember Silva, being more, like, I've just had these addresses on these various slides, because we're getting out to all 19 cities and towns. So thank you for clarifying that. It's much more helpful for people to know that. Okay, how are we doing, by the way? On the three and the three and how it all works? Any questions? There's not a quiz. I know Councilmember Darling's been traveling, or Mayor Pro Tem has been traveling, so stop me if I'm going too fast.
I've got one for you, Chris.
Oh, sure.
On the crossover ballots, and I understand you can go into the office, but can you actually call the office and ask?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, you can call, get a new ballot sent, and then you can just mail it in. You don't have to do anything in person. That was our goal with the postcards, but obviously, a lot of people didn't get that, but all you need to do is call our office and we'll send you a new one.
When's the deadline? February 20?
We, yeah, February 20th, to, yeah, because, well, actually, that's for, that's the deadline for online reregistration, right? So, no, I mean, I mean, I don't want to get in trouble with my elections division, but just call us. I mean, like, you don't want to, you want it to be lost in the mail, you wouldn't want to wait another 27 days at E minus 28 and then call our office. So if you want to be able to avail yourself of the convenience of vote by mail, please do that as soon as possible, but, you know, the mail only takes a couple days, and we'll send it out to you, and then you can return it. And again, so I'm covering on this next slide what the timeline looks like. And just to your point, Councilmember Francois, under California election code, we accept ballots up to E plus seven if they're postmarked by Election Day. So presumably, if we get that ballot to you on March 5, you can turn around and you mail it, and if it gets to us by March 12, then that counts. But we're, I know, as I stand here, we're at E minus 28, you know, I am pleased that the voter information guides got out and that seemingly the ballots are doing what they need to do. I appreciated that our partners at the USPS and our printer got things in position a day early because of the bad weather. So they actually had everything at the Oakland Processing Facility on Sunday instead of Monday in anticipation of how bad the rain was. So I'm anxiously awaiting mine arriving. It has not yet. But at least this election, I got my ballot, I'm going to get my ballot after getting my voter information guide, which is how it's supposed to work. So, how you can help, so right, this is the ask, and so many of you do this for us already, but please communicate with your residents, you all have great networks, and if there's language, we can, you know, dish up for you to make it easy, happy to do that, you know how to find me. And so, but please just reinforce this important information, please try to tell the story to no-party preference voters about how they can participate in the presidential election, and that we'll be prepared to serve them at the polling places. We have 147 polling places ready to go for March 5. It's just an extraordinary effort on the part of our Election Day operations team to capture just between 5 and 10% of the vote. And so, but we want to offer all of these options. So I'd also love your help in encouraging high school students to participate as student poll workers, and also, if you would like our staff to come speak to your youth commission, we just had one of our election supervisors who's responsible for all the polling places just spoke to the Pittsburgh Youth Commission and had a ball, and so just, I know that you guys do, do great things with your youth commission. I'd love for you to consider yourself to be an ambassador for voter registration year round. You know, there are Walnut Creek residents that are becoming citizens year round, want to make sure everybody gets the chance to register. I, I would love to figure out a way to send every 18-year-old a birthday card that's like, hi, welcome to your adulthood and the responsibility so, of voting, but I haven't figured out how to fund that yet. And so, but we really do want to encourage young people to vote. We'd love your help in reinforcing safety messages with law enforcement. I've shared an update to the, for law enforcement about election-specific laws that were changed and updated in 2023. I've shared that with Sheriff Livingston and asked that that be shared out through the Contra Costa Police Chiefs Association. They've been a great partner for me in my early tenure in this job. I spoke to them last fall, and also, we had a tabletop exercise back in June, and we're very happy to have enough law enforcement professionals to be there and inform every single table of our election staff. We held that at the, the Emergency Operations Center for the county, which really helped us work through fairly us work through fairly scary scenarios, but we have to be ready for everything. And so, so we're happy to do that. I did want to just mention that in 2024, Dr. Shirley Weber, the California Secretary of State, has identified that she wants to lift up, Fannie Lou Hamer's famous, I'm so sick and tired of being sick and tired, as a theme to hopefully tap into memories of the Civil Rights Movement and reminding what people have gone through in order for the right to vote, because she just really wants to drive up those turnout numbers. So I will happily, we will do what we can through our social media to reinforce the messages that, that Dr. Weber's office will be putting out. And you can check out our website and follow us on social media. You'll notice if you go to contracostavote.gov, we have a pop-up to try to speak to NPP voters. And so I borrowed that idea from my good friends in LA County, and so appreciate that our team got that up. We are easy to reach. Those are our QR codes for our Instagram and our TikTok accounts. Yes, we have TikTok because we're going after the youth vote, ladies and gentlemen, because the youth vote is not going in the direction that we want it to. So you'll see that we had a, you know, an increase between 2014 and 2018. And again, this is just looking at midterm elections. But we want to do what we can to reach this 18 to 24 demographic. So we actually have a TikTok committee for clerk recorder and one for elections, and we're having fun and really engaging with the public in a new way. So just wanted to plug that. These are just, you know, the Committee on Safe and Secure Elections is the, is the nonprofit that we did our tabletop with. They have a five-part plan that's best in, best in practice for elections officials and law enforcement to collaborate. I just want to tell you, we're doing this, and we will continue to do this. And then this is just a snapshot of that pocket guide that I referred to earlier. So thank you for putting up with this presentation, if you've heard it multiple times, and thank you for your service to our community, and I am happy to open it to any questions.
Are there any questions besides the one we asked?
I brought up a question before that I think, that I was interested in, maybe you could help. So we've got four registered voters at our house. We've got four big pamphlets of all the information. Is there a way to be able to be more efficient, cut down on paper usage, cut down on postage, and have one per household?
That's actually how the, the state does it. The state has one voter guide per household. The county has a policy of having a voter guide for every voter, and that's because voters come in all slices and sizes. So you might have voters that, that if everybody's registered in the same party, they could all use the same book, for example. But the book would look pretty different for people if you were each in a different political party. So I'm happy to explore what that would look like, and hopefully we'll see some innovations. And I mean, I have had to set aside my identity as an environmentalist. The amount of paper it takes to run an election is shocking. Like, if you were at, saw what we have to do just to test our machines for logic and accuracy and the amount of paper that takes, it is a shocking amount of paper. But I would love to, to think about how to do that. It's just been our tradition that every voter gets their own ballot, I mean, their own voter guide.
You may be able to fund those Christmas, those birthday cards.
Maybe I can fund the birthday cards. There you go. I'll look into that. Other questions or comments, suggestions?
Yes, Matt.
So Kristin, thank you for the presentation. This is great information. Just to confirm then, we have two boxes now at City Hall?
Yes.
And voters can feel safe in putting their ballot in either the big box in front or the small box in the back? They both get collected by your office?
The big box is a reflection of how full your box gets and the pace at which it gets full. So we made some decisions and some investments in what we call the jumbos. So now we have some jumbos. Danville Park and Ride, also very popular. And so the, the way that responsibility works is that it's on our election staff. It's our job. Contra Costa workers are picking up those secure drop boxes. They, they started the week before ballots went out. They were out testing their routes, figuring out how far, how long it takes to get between drop boxes and how frequently they should be emptying them. It's a whole process that our Election Day Operations Team handles. It's partly why I tell people, just put them in the mail, because then we, we don't have to, we're not responsible for them, they just magically show up. But again, voters in Contra Costa, about half of their vote by mail comes in through our secure drop boxes. They're exactly the same. You can put them in any drop box in any city, in any jurisdiction in Contra Costa. Also, if you found yourself putting your ballot in a secure drop box in Alameda County or Solano County, by law, they have to get those to us, and your votes will count. There is a whole county-to-county swap that happens during the canvas, canvas with two S's, it's what we call the counting. And so, so that happens. Also, people will send us ballots that are not from this election, so those get sorted out. So, but thankfully, thankfully, in general, people are very well behaved about what they're putting in our drop boxes. I will say, we have a toll-free number, which is another legal requirement now, on every drop box for voters to report if they have problems. So during the day, that is, you know, staffed by a live human, and at night, we've set up an email, a distribution via email to send the recorded messages to folks. And I have let law enforcement know what my cell phone number is and what our assistant registrar, what her phone number is. So in the event that one of the drop boxes is compromised somehow, I don't know how you would do it, but for example, if somehow it were on fire, or if there was something that was really compromising it, we've, we've let law enforcement know what we need from them to participate. But, yeah.
Thank you.
I didn't mean to go down too far of a rabbit hole, but...
No, this is great. This is all good information. And then just to confirm, does every voter get an email or a text from the Secretary of State in your office that the voter guide went out, or their ballot went out, and then when it's returned, when it's been received by your office?
Yeah, you're actually talking about the ballot track system. That is something that the Secretary of State's office runs. And so you get that, and I get that, because we signed up for it.
You have to sign up for that.
You have to sign up for it through the Secretary of State's website. I really encourage everyone to do it. It's such a nice thing to get and some nice reassurance. And, and the feedback, when they have surveyed people about ballot tracks, it's one of the most highly rated government functions. Like, people just think it's a cool thing. So, so our office doesn't have to do any of that. I mean, it, our systems with how we report our ballot processing, we do our part, so that, but the state actually sends out those notifications. And they just offer the ballot, not for the voter information guide.
It provides me some assurance, and I bet it does for other people, too. It's like, oh, good, it got, you know, it's coming, or it got received.
Yeah.
And then just finally, on the no-party preference, being able to, to vote in the primary, you indicated you only had received about 8,000 out of 150,000. Are you looking at other methods to try to, to get those out versus postcards, or I'm not sure?
Yeah, no, so for us, right, we have to think about the, the cost benefit. We've actually, we're excited that we're, we finally have greenlit using the emails we have from our registered voters. We have about 380,000 emails of our registered voters. And prior to me taking office, we never used them for anything, for communicating to voters at all, because we thought we couldn't. But we, I was like, hmm, we have those for an official reason. And so we're going to be thinking about how we can be communicating that, communicating out better, using those methods. Also, because there was a little bit of a debate about whether or not, and you don't want to make people grumpy, you have to give them a reason, an able, an ability to unsubscribe from things, all that, all those caveats. But, you know, for, for voters for whom we have cell phone numbers, we actually are working on, I don't want to get myself in trouble, but we're hoping to launch a pilot where anyone whose signature gets rejected when they send their ballot in, we send them a certified letter. And we're hoping to have a pilot, because we're now authorized to do it under election code, where we can have those people cure that signature using their phone. So in that letter, we're going to mail them, hopefully will be instructions about what they need to text in order to make that happen. We're still working on all the, on the, on the, all the details to pilot that. But we're, we want to have a, we want to make it as easy as possible, no matter what piece of the elections puzzle you're in, for, for voters to get from start to finish. So, so, yeah, so we're trying to think about how to be more innovative, because obviously, a postcard at the holiday times didn't work very well for most of those voters.
Well, thank you, and keep up the great work.
Sure, thank you.
I just wanted to say, the postcards at our house did work because they were presented to the two young voters who are no-party preference, and they said, nah, we're good. But I do appreciate the jumbo box, because there was one year where I was coming in for a council meeting, I had everybody's ballots, and the ballot box was full. So I had to find amongst the people standing there the most reliable-looking person to give our voters our ballots to. So when they come to pick these up, please make sure these get in.
Yes. If you do, and again, if you do ever encounter a box that's full, you can call us. And also, you can just pop those in the USPS, right? Because it's really important that ballots be with...
And my reliable person did actually give them to them, because it all worked. Thank you all for everything you've done.
I was just, thank you very much for the work, and it's exciting to see somebody who's so excited about elections.
I, I do love my job.
It's one of the most important things that we do in our communities to not only preserve democracy, but just to take action and have our voices heard. And so it is really important to have a clerk recorder who is as excited and interested in making it work better for all of us. And when you dropped that ballot, I got ballot tracks in the email, in an email yesterday. So they already know that my ballot is moving somewhere, and it's in my hands today. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, it looks like they've asked all the questions. I just want to say, holy cow, what did you have for dinner? Because you are just so energetic and so exciting, and I, this is my second time, and I still learned more than I did from the first time, because you got it fancier. I have no idea. But you, thank you so much for taking all the time for going to all the cities and, and the mayor's conferences and all those sort of things. Our community is better for your efforts.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Haskew. And I did just want to close by thanking your clerk staff, who made it possible for me to present to the Penole City Council from one of your conference rooms earlier this evening. So, and my deputy is giving public comment in Concord, and my assistant registrar is out in Clayton. So we are fanning out, but your city clerk's office made that possible. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Does anybody of the community have any item that they wish to pull? I know I'm supposed to ask the council first, but I'm not. So I'm not seeing any. Is there anybody on? Say what? Is there anybody on the video?
We're, we're not on Zoom. We're all on Zoom.
We're not on Zoom. We're not on Zoom anymore. Wow.
Move to approve the consent calendar, items 2A through C.
Second. Okay, we have a move and a second.
We all seconded it.
I heard the person closest to me.
I'm still trying to find out where I am on the agenda, so, yeah, okay. So may I have a roll call vote, actually?
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Councilmember Francois?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Mayor Prochem Darling?
Aye.
Mayor Haskew?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right. This portion of the meeting, we're on to public communications, is reserved for comment on items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, request clarifications, or refer them to the staff. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be allocated for this time of public communications for items not on the agenda. If there's any that haven't gotten used up in that 30 seconds, 30 minutes, we will use, we will use the end of the meeting until people have nothing left to say. Written comments submitted have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. At this time, I will note that it is 22:07, and that means that the 30-minute thing ends at 10 after 8:07. Yeah, be consistent, Luella. So 27, 20, there. Do we have anybody here who wishes to make a public comment?
My name is Gilda Gonzalez, and I'm the CEO of Planned Parenthood in Northern California. In April, it will be two years since the Walnut Creek City Council approved the reproductive health buffer zone ordinance for our Walnut Creek Health Center. And since the passage of the ordinance, we have seen, unfortunately, an increase in protester activity and the use of amplified sound through Bluetooth microphones, speakers, and other noise amplifiers. They harass patients and staff and often shout derogatory slurs. I was really moved tonight by the last two presentations that beautifully promoted how Walnut Creek thinks about inclusion and preserving the dignity of its citizen. And what's happening outside our Walnut Creek Health Center is not dignified nor respectful. Given this year's high-stakes elections, we are sure that anti-abortionists will be more confrontational and at times violent. That is why we must act now and prevent the serious safety threat. So I appeal and ask the city to adopt a quiet zone ordinance that ends the use electronic speakers and sound amplifiers within 100 feet of a health center. By enacting a noise ordinance in Walnut Creek, the community can ensure a peaceful and respectful atmosphere for patients and our healthcare providers. In this new era of post-Roe, it is up to local jurisdictions to find ways to protect reproductive healthcare providers and secure patient access. Our patients and our staff need your leadership now. My staff has provided you with a model ordinance, and we look forward to being collaborative partners and finding solutions to keep us all safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Haskew, city council members. I'm Kathy Hemmenway, Executive Director with Walnut Creek Downtown Association. Just wanted to come and share a brief update in regards to one of our programs, Walnut Creek on Ice. The ice rink returned for the 18th season and concluded its four-week season on January 15th. And I'm happy to share that we saw an increase, a slight increase of 6% this year. And that's significant, because this year's season was four weeks, as opposed to last year, we had a six-week run. So we were grateful to the community for supporting this program, and we added a couple of components, including fireside, fire pits through a rink-side experience, and also brought back hockey, which was a really very popular component to the rink. And we'll be able to share some final numbers once the, the ice rink committee meets with Special Ice, our ice rink operator, next week for the final recap. But we appreciate your support, and we appreciate the support of the presenting sponsor, Visit Walnut Creek. And then a couple of our other major sponsors include Mechanics Bank, Kaiser Walnut Creek, and Terra Nova Industries. So we will be back with more, but I just wanted to share that as we've had a couple of questions on how the rink went, particularly since it was a four-week or shorter season. And then on a side note, our, for Walnut Creek Downtown's programs and events are scheduled for the 2024 year ahead, has been released. So for all of those details, you can find that on our website, walnutcreekdowntown.com. Thank you.
Thank you, and the ice was wonderful. I skated.
That's right. You were out there quite a bit.
Four times.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, honorable city council members and Mayor Haskew. My name is David Harder, and I've lived in Walnut Creek since 1987. My purpose this evening is to demonstrate that the proposed aquatic center changing rooms are inadequate, also why you should fix this, given power of the purse. Slide one on your handout shows the proposed pools and the changing room location. Slide two shows the proposed changing room floor plan with 18 feet of bench. The slide three in large detail shows the proposed changing order, area in square feet. Slide four shows the existing Clark Pool changing area, which I measured. The architects have replaced Clark's 325 square feet and 70 feet of bench with 140 square feet and 18 feet of bench. This is insufficient, not to say defective. We are missing almost 400 square feet for the men's and women's combined. At the trunk and treat meeting last fall, I asked the architect if his firm had ever designed an aquatic center. He said, mm, no. You have so far paid these amateurs $1 million, with more to come. I urge you to assign... I urge you to assign the aquatic design group, already on payroll, to design the aquatic center floor plan. They have designed hundreds of aquatic facilities and received over 300 awards for that work. These proven professionals should design the aquatic center floor plan and stamp those construction drawings. Anything less simply throws good money after bed. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. I don't see any. Thank you. Anybody else wish to make a public comment? Speak now or forever after. Okay, seeing no one, we're moving on to the next item.
Actually, I do, oh.
I was just going to ask, we had a question. We have talked previously about revisiting the Planned Parenthood noise ordinance. And I think we, I'd want to check in with the city manager on the timing.
Okay.
So that the commenter can understand, know where we are.
Yeah, Dan Buckshai, city manager. Yes, your council did provide prior direction to come back with an updated ordinance. We are targeting the April 2 meeting to do just that.
And could I ask a follow-up question on that? Is the police department currently and actively recording the calls that are coming in and making sure that activity at least is not getting violent?
To the extent that they receive calls, they certainly record them, yes.
There's an officer.
And if Captain Hibbs would like to expound upon that?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council, Brian Hibbs, Operations Captain, Walnut Creek Police Department. We are compiling calls for service at Planned Parenthood, and we are actively working with the city attorney's office to draft a sound ordinance as an addendum. And we should have a recommendation to you by, by April.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
And I have a question to follow up. Mr. Harder has raised an issue about the architects that are assigned to do the aquatics portion of the community center and aquatics facility. Can, city manager, can you clarify the role of the aquatics design group or ask the Public Works Director to do that?
So I see we both have our Arts and Recreation Director and Public Works Director. I'll let them draw straws here if who wants to answer that in more detail.
Thank you, council member. For the record, Kevin, Staffing Director of Arts and Recreation. To your question, Aquatic Design Group is intimately involved in this project, working closely with Nolan Tam, the other project architect, the lead project architect on this project, and they are helping us closely every step of the way with the design of the aquatic facility.
So they are assigned to do that portion of the work?
They're working in, Nolan Tam is the lead. Aquatic Design Group is, is a subcontractor to them, working closely on this project, evaluating all of the components of the aquatic facility.
So the expert's doing the work?
The expert and his team are doing the work, correct?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, okay. All right. Next on the agenda is council member and staff announcements, reports on activities or requests. City Attorney?
Madam Mayor, there were no reportable actions from closed session this evening.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yeah, good evening. Just two updates. First, as you've probably noticed, we do have a new face at the dais here, and I would like to introduce our new Deputy City Clerk, Alenna Branson. And I really hope I got that right. I practiced it multiple times. So I got a thumbs up, so I'm very relieved. So she just started last week. Welcome to Walnut Creek. We're thrilled to have you here. And I'm sure we'll see you at many future meetings. The other update that I wanted to share is a quick storm update. Obviously, there was heavy wind and rain events. Walnut Creek was not as impacted as obviously some of the other areas of the state in terms of the amount of rain, but the winds were extremely high. There were numerous down trees that impacted power lines as well as closed intersections. And do want to thank all the extra effort by our Public Works crews, our police crews. As you can imagine, we're working in the wind and the rain primarily on Sunday and Monday to clear those intersection roadways as quickly as possible. Ignatio Valley Road was closed for a bit, which as we know is a major thoroughfare that sees up to 70,000 vehicles a day. And when it's closed even for a short period of time, traffic is rerouted and becomes very problematic. So that was a high priority for our team, working in concert with PG&E. And it was reopened before the morning commute Monday. A couple lanes were closed yesterday afternoon to restore power to the area. That was done, and everything is, is fully open again. So great work by everybody involved, and appreciate everybody's efforts. And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Amen. I was one of the house, I was in one of the houses that didn't have power for an extended period of time. And boy, when the heater went on, I just pretty much yodeled. I was so happy. Okay, let me start with somebody who hasn't been around the neighborhood for a while. Your report should be so small.
My report on events over the last three weeks is very small. We took an extended family trip down to South America to see Patagonia. And the only thing I have to report back is that it is important to recognize the sustainability aspect because the glaciers down there are in tremendous retreat. And I'm glad that our city is doing its part to make the world more sustainable. So those kind of magic places stay for the next generation.
Excellently said. I almost called you Mayor Protam. Councilmember Silva.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. A few things to report. I will leave the John Muir Cancer Center celebration announcement to the mayor because that was very special. And also, a number of us were at the celebration at Rossmore 10 days ago for the, we'll call it a groundbreaking, but it's not really a groundbreaking, but for shaded fuel break. So this is an extended tree covered, but they're going to clear the ground so that there's less likely, to reduce the likelihood of wildland urban fires around Rossmore. It will extend into Lafayette and eventually to Maraga as well. This is being funded by a $3 million-plus grant from Cal Fire through the Office of Emergency Services of Governor Newsom. And it was exciting that it's getting going, and we hope it will help to prevent, it will help prevent wildland fires. The recent meeting at the Walnut Creek Homeless Task Force, we got an update on how the winter night shelter is going. And they've been working with about 90 of the under or unhoused, providing services. Not that they're there every night, because we have a capacity on that. But they are supporting the unhoused, and it's really important. About 10 days ago was the annual point in time count. It's a national counting of the unhoused across communities across the United States done through the Federal Housing and Urban Development Administration. And they had about 200 volunteers in the field to do it. And I want to thank those from Walnut Creek's Police Department and County Fire, et cetera, who helped to volunteer to do that because it's a, it's a heavy lift that early in the morning to help determine how many unhoused we have in our communities. And Loews &amp; Fishes is a nonprofit in the area, and they are serving meals every day at the Trinity Center. But they've also now kicked off their program to, for culinary training. It's not a chef's program as much as it's a kitchen support program and a serving support program, so that those who are of lower incomes can get jobs in our communities in the restaurant business. So we hope that works successfully. And with the mayor, two weekends ago, I was able to participate in an appointments workshop for local women who are interested in being appointed or elected to office. And it was sponsored by the County Commission on Women and California Women Lead. And the workshop was led by former State Assembly Member Catherine Baker, who is now a member of the statewide Fair Political Practices Commission Board. And that was very interesting to be able to participate in that. Thank you very much. Councilmember Wilk?
Thank you. Well, a few things to report. I am on the Cal City's Environmental Quality Policy Committee. We had our first meeting, well, I guess it was our second official meeting, but the first actual substantive meeting, an adoption of the 2024 work plan, which informs the staff and the committee and the lobbyists up in Sacramento of the work that we're going to be targeting. So we have our, we have our top three priorities. These are not limited just to these three. There were a lot to go over in environmental quality, especially in California. But the top three are climate change resiliency. The second is water, and that includes water conservation, groundwater, everything water. And the third is energy and utilities. And I think as a lot of us can attest in Walnut Creek, that's very important. We want to make sure that we have consistent energy at all times throughout the year. But that also means that there's other areas that are going to have focus at one time or another throughout the year, which will include air quality, sequa streamlining, coastal risk, disaster emergency preparedness. And we know that's a big issue, especially we just heard with the fire break at Rossmore, wind and solar energy, solid waste and recycling and plastic and microplastic recycling. So there's a lot going on when it comes to environmental and environmental quality within California. I'm also on the Board of Directors for County Connection for our transportation in the central Contra Costa. And I did want to let staff and the community know that there is a new SB 210 law, which CARB implemented and added an unexpected fee at the public works level. I don't know if we're familiar with this in Walnut Creek. It was, it was really a surprise to County Connection and actually to a lot of public agencies. But essentially, what it's called is the Truck Check Rule, the Truck Check Rule Car, which is that heavy-duty diesel vehicle, vehicles over 14,000 pounds, of which Walnut Creek has plenty of those, are now having to register annually through CARB instead of registration once over the life of the vehicle. And also, emission tests have to occur semi-annually now. So for our own public works, this is important to check with representatives and, and also talk with County Connection if you have any questions because MTC is very involved in this right now. This affects truly every public agency. As a liaison to Rossmore, I was alerted to a problem, and I think a few of the council members here may know, but just to ensure that everybody knows about this, they're having a problem getting insurance renewals for their homes. We've heard of some of the issues when it comes to insurance, getting home insurance, period, in California right now. But this means that people in Rossmore specifically, they're not able to get mortgages. They're worried about the property values moving forward due to the loans not being warrantable, and refinancing can be very difficult. So this is certainly a state issue. This isn't at the city level, but this is something that's really impacting a lot of our community. And I'm glad Casey's here that we're going to be hearing later about this because this is something that is really a serious issue moving forward. And that they have talked into our state reps as well, but again, just bubbling this up to our city council level. Lastly, on a much more fun note, there is an Arts and Rec Job Fair. It's occurring on this Thursday. It is on 4:30 to 6:30 at the Shadlands Art Center. Lots of jobs available over the summer. So anybody that's listening to this that has, whether you have teenagers or people looking for jobs as summer camp counselors, lifeguards, building attendants, coaches, I coached for many, many years, gym attendants, preschool co-teachers, ticket agents, house managers, and more. So Shadlands Arts and Rec Job Fair, Thursday, 4:30 to 6:30. Be there if you need this. That's my report.
And well sold. Councilmember Francois?
Thank you, Mayor. I, as a liaison to the Chamber of Commerce, I attended their January 18th meeting. Some events that are upcoming are, of course, the annual East Bay Women's Conference. For the second year in a row, it will be held at the Lesher Center. So Walnut Creek is proud to host that major conference right here in town, two blocks over. That'll be on March 5. And the keynote speakers are Felicia Hatcher, Allison Massari, and Kelly Swanson. East Bay Women's Conference, March 5. Get your tickets now. It will sell out. It does every year. This is the second year we're hosting it here in Walnut Creek. The Chamber will be hosting the Future of the Region Conference in late March. I believe we all have that on our calendars, and that's at a, I think, a location to be determined. So the mayor's aware of that, and I believe is participating and speaking at that. The Art and Wine Festival will be held June 1 and June 2 out at Heather Farm Park. That's always a fun event. So put that on your calendar. That's my Chamber update. On recycle smart, we had a meeting late last month. Mayor and a council member, Silva and I serve on that board, which oversees solid waste, organics, and recycling for the six-member entities of that JPA, which Walnut Creek is one of them. And we adopted our rate year 10 rates. Not a surprise. There is an increase in the rates, but it's a pretty modest increase of about 5%, essentially CPI. And what I always like is looking at the chart that shows Walnut Creek compared to all the other jurisdictions in Contra Costa County and some in Alameda County, because we are at the very bottom, meaning we have the very lowest garbage rates among those entities, as primarily due, not, we negotiated a great deal, I'd like to say, Councilmember Silva and I did, but it's because of a lot of the commercial entities that we have in Walnut Creek that are helping kind of even out the rates for a lot of residents here. So the average resident in Walnut Creek pays $29.59 for garbage service. At the high end is Arinda at $62. And if you can believe it, people in Piedmont are paying $100 a month for garbage service. So. And I, I would also note that both Councilmember Silva and I are serving on ad hoc committees related to the selection of new consultants for our contracts to, to provide the, the collection services and the post-collection services. We're about two years from those or more, from those contracts expiring. And we formed ad hoc committees, and we're both serving on, on ad hoc committees to help move that along for, for the full board consideration. I did attend the BASH event hosted by the Chamber at Pizza Lina Pizzeria in the Countrywood Shopping Center. And that was a fun event. Dashed out of there, and Councilmember Silva attended that as well, to attend the East Bay Leadership Council meeting, or no, event, the East Bay Leadership Series with keynote speaker, John Quinones from ABC News, who hosts, I believe it's something like,
What Would You Do?
What Would You Do? And kind of, it's, it's the old Candid Camera type, for those who remember that show. But these are kind of more ethical dilemmas that he puts people in, including, you know, he gave an example of, of a person that was kind of lying on the ground at a subway station and watching person after person after person pass this person by, no one offering help until someone else who was unhoused stopped and helped, helped this person. So good reminder that, let's all try to be kind out there. And if you see somebody who needs help, offer a hand. I'm going to let the mayor talk about the cancer center opening, which we all attended and was a great event. And then just to close out today, that I had the pleasure of presenting to Mrs. Enlow's 7th grade core class at Sequoia Middle School. And that's because one of her students, Luke Chang, who lives in Walnut Creek and attends Sequoia, wrote to me last fall and said that they'd been studying about leadership in their class, including Julia Caesar. He made some very favorable comparisons between the Walnut Creek City Council and Julia Caesar. And ended his letter by encouraging us not to invade Concord and inviting me to attend his class, which I did today, and I thoroughly enjoyed that. And that's my report.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I'm going to start with the Bering Center and
No invasion plans.
Yeah, no, 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 not yet. So, so I'm going to start with the Bering Cancer Building at John Muir Hospital, which is on the outside, unmitigatedly a beautifully designed building, and on the inside, an incredible accumulation of state-of-the-art ways to treat patients who are concerned about cancer or have cancer. And, and it was just breathtakingly, you know, an MRI machine probably isn't breathtakingly beautiful, but when it was explained to us how fast it was and what it was doing, I sort of got fond of it. So, so they're, they're doing a great job. And if you have a chance, the artwork in the building is absolutely stunning. They have a, a quiet garden, and they have a mural that is lit, and it is in, at nighttime, just absolutely breathtaking. And I think of all the people in our community and outside of our community who are going to get great service from people who really care about going through the cancer stuff, all, all requiring a great deal of comfort. On my other job, which nobody ever, I'm, I'm on the Contra Costa Transportation Authority Commission. And with that comes the Planning Committee and, and voting about things on the Accessible Transportation Committee, which I am now chair of, of which I am now chair. And, and it turns out, I'm also on the Innovate 680 thing. So pretty much, I'm supposed to know everything there is to know about Contra Costa transportation. If you ask me anything, keep the question very simple. If you ask me anything, keep the question very simple. I listen well. I don't necessarily absorb everything because they talk in acronyms, but it still is an important organization. And we are looking at renewing the urban limit lines for all the cities, making the programs for safe routes to school countywide. And we're trying to make sure that all our cities are in compliance so that they can get their maximum amount of allotments from our Measure J, which is a sales tax thing that we passed in the county a long time ago. And that's it. I went to the Rev and Tax Committee for the State, for the League of Cities, and we talked about sales tax and keeping the sales tax fair, with the substitutes for gas tax, and the fact that the state kind of announced they were really short of money. And that makes every city really nervous because sometimes they reach down and take, not only don't they give the money they promised us, but they take the money we already have. So we discussed issues that would come up from that. That being the end of my report, I think we're ready to go on to the public hearing. And let's start the public hearing by checking in with the council to see if there were any ex parte. Oh, no, no. Somebody, somebody out there should have stuck their hand up and reminded me, there is legislative agenda. So sorry, I apologize. I raced right through, trying to get the meeting over by 10.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public. My name is Carla Hanson. I'm the deputy city manager. The item before you is our proposed 2024 legislative agenda. And each year, the council adopts, considers, and adopts a state legislative agenda which provides guidance to our lobbyists in Sacramento, and they act as our, on our behalf, as our voice on all state legislation. So our legislative committee, which comprises of the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, came together, reviewed the proposed edits, proposed additional edits to the legislative agenda, which is now recommended for your consideration and approval this evening. In your agenda packet, it contains two attachments, one that has the proposed edits and then a clean version to make it easier to read. There were additional edits submitted as an addendum. So that addendum is with you at the dais for your reference for discussion through the item. Before we get into the legislative agenda, we do have an update from our lobbyist, Casey Elliott, who's the Vice President of Towns and Public Affairs. And he's going to look in his crystal ball and tell us all what's going to happen this year with state, all things state-related, and especially the budget and state legislative matters. So with that, I will hand it over to Casey. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Good evening, everyone. Casey Elliott, Vice President, Towns and Public Affairs. As Carla mentioned, we will be providing an update on the city's proposed legislative platform for your consideration and adoption. First, I wanted to provide just a brief context of kind of where we are within the state, the state legislative process. The legislature gavelled in at the beginning of January for the second year of their two-year session. This, the second year of a two-year session is important because essentially any bill that doesn't meet various deadlines along the way is done. Whereas on the first year of a session, you can work over a two-year period on some more complex issues. There is more urgency with most of the bills, because if they do not get approved this year, they will need to be reintroduced brand-new next year under a new legislature and all of, that that brings. We would anticipate approximately 2,000 bills to be introduced this year. In addition, we will, since it is the second year of a session, we do have some carryover from bills that were introduced last year, probably in the range of 300 or so bills that will get considered as two-year bills. The bill introduction deadline is a week from Friday, February 16th. As of right, as of yesterday, I think there were about 400 or so of those 2,000 bills were introduced. So the next 10 days, there will be a lot of bills introduced on topics, big and small, though I do not anticipate any municipal invasion bills, but I will now be on the lookout to make sure that nothing happens there. The big issues that we do anticipate this year, continuations of themes from last year, largely housing and homelessness, public safety, retail theft, as was already mentioned, and climate resiliency. And then we'll have other issues compounded, given that it is an election year, the legislature has not done placing measures on the ballot for this year. As we briefly look at housing and homelessness, the past number of years have been very local government-focused, various streamlining efforts in efforts to increase housing production. Hopefully, we'll see a little bit of a calming of that while the legislature lets some of the recently enacted bills take effect and see how those actually get implemented on the ground. That said, I do think that we'll see bills on some of the previous efforts, you know, some revisiting ADU law, some other prior topics that we've seen, such as potentially impact fees or other elements. So I think that the legislature is going to stay busy in this. There's also additional, a court case, a major court case we're anticipating a ruling on related to encampments, depending upon how that court case comes out in the next month. We could see a lot of legislative activity related to what local governments can do dealing with local encampments. As we talk about public safety and particularly retail theft, broad issue everywhere across the state. Obviously, there's been experience locally with this issue. Hopefully, we're nearing a sense of something being done. The legislature historically has been hesitant to add new felonies, expand on misdemeanors. However, I think we're seeing a critical mass. We've seen proposals from Democrats, from Republicans, from Northern California, Central Valley, Southern California, even Governor Newsom in the news earlier this week was at a local target in Sacramento and observed retail theft firsthand. So I think that there is a sense of urgency, whether or not that, how that materializes, I think, is still yet to be seen, but I do think we will see a relatively substantive proposal in this area this year. And then, as it relates to climate resiliency, obviously, given the weather, the climate change, the impacts from wet years, dry years, the impacts from sea level rise, flooding, drought, we'll continue to see an emphasis as it relates to SEQA, SEQA interfacing with housing, development in coastal areas, air quality, so many of the items that Councilmember Francois mentioned, I think we're going to be seeing the legislature consider. And then lastly, and I will talk a little bit more in a minute about statewide measures, the legislature is considering a couple of different measures in specifics, some bond measures to place on the ballot. The legislature has until the end of June to place measures on the ballot. The state budget. The state budget is going to be an overriding theme this year in Sacramento. As you saw in November, the Legislative Analyst Office projected a very large budget deficit, a neighborhood of $68 billion. The governor, when he introduced his January budget, it addressed a $38 billion budget deficit. I will say that those numbers are not as far apart as they appear. Many of the underlying baseline assumptions that the governor used as part of his budget solved what the LAO described. That said, when you kind of look at apples to apples, the LAO still believes that there's about a $10 billion gap between what the administration is proposing to solve in their January budget and what the LAO thinks is a problem. Additionally, we're already seeing the January revenues into the state are coming in below the projections that were factored into the governor's January budget. So as the state moves through to April 15th and tax collection deadline, it's going to be very important to see where those numbers come back, which will get factored into the May revise, because those may result in additional budget solutions being needed to be found in order to address the deficit, the current deficit. Should also note that the governor's budget, even if everything went exactly according to plan, would result in multiple out-year significant budget deficits in the neighborhood of $20 to $30 billion over the next several budget years. So this is not the last we'll have of this conversation. The governor's January budget tries to minimize the impacts of addressing such a large deficit. While there are cuts within the budget, you know, to the tune of eight and a half, $9 billion, it does utilize pretty much every trick in the state, in the state's budget. So utilizing rainy day funds and reserves, like I said, cuts and reductions, deferrals of previously approved spending, shifting from general fund to special funds. So really, the administration has put forward a budget that tries to spread out the impact and not just do significant cuts. Also, there's one proposal within the budget that would raise some revenue for healthcare-related purposes, but for the most part, the budget does not contemplate new revenue as part of the solutions. Additionally, since part of the budget deficit is brought about by the delay in the tax filing deadline until November, part of the budget deficit is in not only the current year, but in the 22, 23 concluded budget year. So we will see the legislature and administration take some early actions to address some items that they can in the current year budget, as well as budgets that have already been closed out. So we'll have to see where that goes. Obviously, as was already noted, there's definitely an acute awareness of the legislature and the administration's history of looking to local governments to help solve budget gaps. There are a few items in place, Proposition 1A, some other protections, since we went through some of those significant budget deficits in the Schwarzenegger, Brown, and Davis administrations. So hopefully, it won't be as bad. But at a minimum, I think that we will be looking at funding programs that the city looks at will be on delayed cycles, will maybe have less funding available to apply for. So we will see some impacts. Obviously, we'll try to minimize the direct impacts to the city as much as possible. As I noted earlier, it is a ballot year. It's an election year, as you heard earlier. The legislature will be engaged in the election and preparing for the election and putting items on the election. As we look at legislative ballot initiatives, we have Proposition 1, which will appear on the March ballot, which is the governor's mental health funding initiative, which would repurpose some existing state revenues to help provide funding for particularly vulnerable populations to address mental health issues. At the end of last session, we also saw activity related to ACA 1 and ACA 13, which will appear on the November ballot. Also, the Taxpayer Protection Act. All three of those deal with abilities for local governments to raise revenue and at what various thresholds. I should note that on ACA 13, Taxpayer Protection, and ACA 1, since those do appear in November, there is an opportunity for the proponents, in the case of the Taxpayer Protection Act, or the legislature, to make additional modifications to those things again prior to June 27th. Additionally, we have items that have already qualified for the ballot that can be placed on November, assuming that the proponents do not pull them back, which include new revenue, new tax revenues for high-income earners to help fund items for pandemic detection, increases in minimum wage, as well as an item that would expand local authority over rent control. So again, proponent initiatives, I think there's, as of this morning, I think there's 29 initiative proposals that are currently out on the streets gathering signatures. So there's likely going to be more change for the November ballot. And then lastly, the legislature, as I noted earlier, is still considering a couple of bond measures that they're going to look at. Education bond, a climate resiliency bond, and then potentially a housing bond. All of those are still under consideration, need to be acted on, in time to be placed on the ballot. I would say at this point, the administration and the legislature have shown a strong willingness to want to put an education bond on the ballot, similar with the climate bond. I think on the climate bond and the housing bond, it's going to be more of a conversation of what goes into those bonds, what's the appropriate level to be placed on the ballot, what would those funds go for? And then how do those interact with the state budget deficit? Because the state will be looking, in my estimation, to fund some of their general fund items, push them over to a bond so they can be funded through bond funds. Deep breath. So moving over to the city's platform. We, along with city staff, have, and the legislative committee, have looked at and revised the proposed 2024 legislative platform for the city. In addition to the committee and my office, we also received significant input from the departments that are impacted. And so that's the amended document that you see in front of you. It's updated, again, to reflect the changing local priorities, changing focuses at the state level, as well as reflect actions that have been taken previous, previously at the state and federal levels. Proposed changes, the significant changes that are proposed in, as part of the document, incorporate language reflecting the adoption of the city's Sustainable Action, Sustainability Action Plan and local roadway safety plan, so wanting to ensure that those are considered when we're looking at state legislation, both from policy and funding level, funding elements. Addition of language that provides local governments flexibility to offset impacts of new housing development. As I noted earlier, there have, in previous legislatures, they've talked about things related to impact fees. We have Taxpayer Protection on the ballot. So again, wanting to update that language to ensure that the city has flexibility to offset impacts and provide new and existing residents with the amenities that they would anticipate coming with those developments. And then lastly, as was noted earlier, Mayor Councilman Wilk, the addition of language supporting the monitoring of the property insurance markets as it relates to affordability and availability of coverage for individual homeowners, HOAs, multifamily. That is definitely a significant issue, really in all areas of the state. Many of the areas that are impacted by wildfires and other natural disasters are finding it very difficult to secure insurance coverage because insurers are either not writing new policies, or they're removing themselves from the California market completely. I will note, the Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lara and his office have been holding various hearings and meetings to discuss this issue. They're also working with the administration and the legislature to craft a proposal. One of the reasons that we included the word "monitoring" is because it's going to be very interesting to see if and how everyone is able to strike a balance of providing coverage with maintaining the affordability for homeowners. I think the easy solution would just say to allow the insurers to factor in potential weather events, catastrophic events, and those things. But if that's happened unfettered, then the cost of policies would be so significant that it may not end up helping many of the homeowners because they wouldn't be able to afford the coverage that's provided. So I do anticipate that something's going to happen related to that this year. Hopefully, we'll see something in print sooner rather than later because that is going to be something that's going to need ongoing revisions throughout the year. And then lastly, once the platform is approved, it serves as the policy framework, so for the upcoming advocacy session. So when me and my team are looking at bills that are being introduced, when we're interfacing with Cal Cities or other stakeholder groups, this provides us a good roadmap of where the city may land on certain issues or what issues we need to raise because they aren't covered in here. So it kind of, for us, it's very important what's in here, but it's also just as important as what's not in here. So that's also very important. Also, it'll serve as the basis for the Legislative Committee and city staff to consider positions on legislation as those are brought directly to you from various stakeholders that are engaged in legislation throughout the year. And then also, we will be sharing the approved platform, once it's adopted, with your legislative delegation. So again, as those offices are either considering legislation introduced, or they are being presented with these bills in committee on the floor and being asked to weigh in, they'll have an idea of the city's position and hopefully know where we stand on certain issues, or again, when they need to reach out and get more input on issues that are of importance to the city. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on any of the items here. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. What do we got? Questions?
Just to thank you, because I think it's very thoughtful what is being presented here, and thank you to the committee and to staff and to towns and...
Thank you. All right. Any public comment? Public comment about our legislative? As I might have guessed, nobody is leaping up. Excellent. You must have covered everything. Okay. Then I think we need to have a motion to...
As a member of the committee, I'd be happy to move to approve the 2024 State Legislative Agenda.
Oh.
As amended.
As amended, on the dais.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. May I have a roll call vote? May I have a roll call vote?
Mayor Protem Darling.
Aye.
Mayor Hask- Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk.
Aye.
Mayor Haskew.
Oh, yes, aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
On to the next item, and that would be the selection of applicants to be interviewed for consideration for the 2024 commissions. Do you have some input, city?
Yeah, I do not have a PowerPoint, but I have a brief update. So this biannual commission recruitment process, we had 14 openings across all commissions, including one opening each for a Walnut Creek representative on the Contra Costa County Advisory Council on Aging and the Contra Costa Mosquito and Vector Control Board. Included in the agenda packet is a listing of all 49 qualified candidates. Additionally, the council did receive the complete applications for review. And at this point in time, it's council standard practice to ballot and select who they would like to interview at your next meeting set for February 20. In the past, council has set a standard of interviewing three candidates per opening. So I'm going to pass around ballots. So if you'd like to ballot at this time or provide other direction, the choices are to interview all, interview a select few, or direct myself to go back and reopen the recruitment and try to find additional qualified applicants. I would suggest that for that we interview all for the Design Review, Board of Appeals, Committee on Aging, and Mosquito and Vector Control, given that we received one to five applications each, and that we ballot for Arts, Pros, Planning, and Transportation.
So you're suggesting that we take out the ballot for Board of Appeals, Vector Control. So do we need to make a motion to do that?
I would.
I would say yes.
Yeah. So I move that we interview all applicants for the Advisory Council on Aging, the Board of Appeals, the Contra Costa Mosquito and Vector Control Board, and the Design Review Commission.
I'm sorry, I should have spoken up earlier. I have a client that's an applicant for Board of Appeals, so can we do that one separately? And I can abstain from the selection of interviewing.
We certainly, we certainly-
So I will move to to strike the Board of Appeals for my motion.
Okay. Can I have a second on that, please?
Second.
Thank you. May I have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Darling.
Aye.
Mayor Haskew.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And let's approach the-
Now, I move that we interview all applicants for the Board of Appeals.
I second that one.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Mayor Haskew.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Abstain.
Councilmember Wilk.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Darling.
Yes.
Motion carries, noting the abstention from Councilmember Francois.
Okay. And then, we are down to the place where we have Arts Commission, Park and Rec, and Planning, and Transportation in my current-
So four, just-
How many are we voting for, for each of these, given the number of openings?
I'd suggest that do four rather than three, because there's a couple where it's the same person a couple times and-
So vote for four to have four interviewed?
No, we have two openings on three of these, which would mean by by practice, we would interview six.
Ah, that's a fine detail on the practice I did not know about.
Welcome.
I will always, yeah. So for the ones where we have two openings, we would vote for six. For the ones with one opening, we would vote for three. Is that correct?
Vote to select three.
Vote to select, to interview.
Three.
Just to break a little bit from precedent, it seems like on parks, can we do more than three? Four?
I'm good with voting.
Should we just keep it six across the board, or?
It takes longer to do six. That's the, we'll be here at two, rather than-
Maybe four for parks?
I'd like to do, yeah. Some of those are people that I really don't know, and I really would-
So I make a motion that we vote for six for Arts, four for Pros, six for Planning, and six for Transportation.
I will second that.
Thank you, although I'll need a recount, so I can mark my papers and know how much I'm going to vote for. Okay?
Six for Arts, four for Pros.
Six for Arts.
Four for Pros, six for Transportation. We don't have to use our our total votes, we can-
I just like Pros.
Four for Pros.
But I, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Yeah, let's vote, and then I can have somebody take me aside.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Darling.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk.
Aye.
Mayor Haskew.
Aye.
May I ask a question of the clerk?
I'd be so happy if you did.
For the Arts Commission, under our policy, our guidelines, we allow, among the five members of the Arts Commission, up to two of them may be non-city residents. But we already have one existing member who sits in a non-city seat. So this means, of the candidates for Arts, while we're selecting two, we can only select one that is a non-resident.
That is correct.
Is that clear? Okay.
And again, just to be crystal clear here, it's up to six for those ones that we said six. It's up to four for the ones that we said four, right? It doesn't have to be-
Bingo.
All right.
Six for- Two for- Three for- Four for- Five for- Six for- Seven for- Eight for- Nine for- Ten for- Eleven for- Twelve for- Thirteen for- Fourteen for- Fifteen for- Sixteen for- Seventeen for- Eighteen for- Nineteen for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for- Hundred for- Twenty for- Thirty for- Forty for- Fifty for- Sixty for- Seventy for- Eighty for- Ninety for-
Okay.
May I please have your report?
Yes. Ballots have been tabulated and beginning with the Arts Commission, I will start with those that receive the highest number of votes. So those receiving five votes. Five votes. And I should have practiced these names, but that's Sanit Tesfe. Receiving four votes Jaclyn Smith and Alisa Kutzl. Receiving three votes Laura Taylor, Julia Stewart, Tanya Mikowski, and Peter Magnani. Receiving two votes Christine Reed. And receiving one vote Rosalyn Gottfried.
So can you clarify how many people received two votes?
One.
How many received three?
Four.
Can you say who the four were that received three votes?
Laura Taylor, Julia Stewart, Tanya Mikowski, and Peter Magnani.
So it would seem to make sense to do the threes and the fours and fives. That would give us seven?
Six.
Six.
Could you read them again from the top because it's really hard? We never got a list that was in alphabetical order by last name. We got it alpha order by first name.
You want me to read those that received five?
From five, four, and three again, please.
Yep, those, okay. Receiving five votes Net Sanit Tesfe. Receiving four votes Jaclyn Smith and Alisa Kutzl.
Can you say? Okay.
Slower. Receiving three votes Laura Taylor, Julia Stewart, Tanya Mikowski, and Peter Magnani.
I think those were the ones. That's seven if we interview those seven.
That's nine.
What?
That's seven.
Oh.
And then we have two votes Christine Reed and one vote Rosalyn Gottfried.
So if we agree with the total number of all of those that were at three and above, we're at seven? Are we okay just interviewing seven?
I move that we interview the seven. It'll be in two banks of a three and a four.
That makes sense. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Council member Silva.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Darling.
Aye.
Council member Francois.
Aye.
Council member Wilk.
Aye.
Mayor Haskew.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. On to the next one.
Next up, we have the Pros Commission. We have one individual receiving five votes Cameron Collins. One individual receiving four votes Glory Ann Sasser. And three individuals receiving three votes Craig Corson, John Kopchik, Sharon Pinkstaff. And then we have one member, one candidate receiving one vote Christopher Wong.
I'm sorry, you said five. Cameron Collins had five. I got the threes. Who had four?
Glory Ann Sasser.
So that's five people with three votes and above. Is that right? So I would move that we interview those with three and above.
Second.
All right. Absolutely done. May I have a roll call vote?
Council member Wilk.
Aye.
Council member Francois.
Aye.
Council member Silva.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Darling.
Yes.
Mayor Haskew.
Aye.
Moving on to the Planning Commission. We have four individuals receiving four votes Charles Krilling, Stephen Quoc, Jeff Moline, and Molly P. Klopp. I'm going to double check one of the ballots. There's a correction. Molly P. Klopp received five votes. And the other four mentioned did receive the four votes.
I'm sorry, could you please read those again?
Yep. Jeff Moline, Stephen Quoc, Charles Krilling.
The other three, okay.
Mm-hmm. And then receiving three votes Kenneth Miller. Receiving two votes Sylvia Keller. And receiving one vote Kevin Burke and Jonathan Kaufman.
Move to interview those who received five, four, and three votes.
Second.
Roll call.
Council member Silva.
Aye.
Council member Wilk.
Aye.
Council member Francois.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Darling.
Yes.
Mayor Haskew.
Aye.
Motion carries. Last, we have Transportation Commission. Receiving five votes, we have Ashley James, Charles Krilling. Receiving four votes Laura Patch, Craig Deviney. Receiving three votes Edward Guerrero, Kevin Burke, Richard Brightman.
Jeez. That's everybody.
Move to interview all the candidates.
Second.
I mean, it's six or seven, so.
Roll call.
Council member Francois.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Darling.
Aye.
Council member Silva.
Aye.
Council member Wilk.
Aye.
Mayor Haskew.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. May I ask a question?
Of course.
Given, what time are we starting this meeting?
I will need.
In February. Should we have started in January?
Yes, I will need to go back and calculate how much time will be needed.
We'll just have to be efficient with the number of questions we ask and, okay. Thank you.
Okay. It has been a long time for people to be sitting, so let's take a 10-minute break. And then we'll return for the last item on the agenda.
And welcome back to the September, uh, September, the February 6th Council meeting. And we're up to the final item, which is a public hearing. I'm going to now ask the council if anybody has any ex parte information that they'd like to report.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Next, Kevin.
I haven't met with anybody, though I did receive two calls on voicemail from the applicant for this.
Thank you.
I have not met with anyone.
None for me.
None for me as well. Okay, and now we need a staff presentation. Welcome to the dais podium, whatever we call it.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. My name is Brittany Illinois. I'm an associate planner with the Community Development Department. So we're here to talk about a potential general plan amendment for 1530 Shuwi. So before we begin, you'll have received a few addendums. And a couple of them are from public comments we've received after the deadline. And one would be an alteration to the council report regarding some density calculations. And so we can get more into that later on. So to start off with some background, you would have seen an application or pre-application come in through last May, and that was for eight parcels bounded by Stowe, Bonanza, North California, Shuwi. And at that time, there was a proposal for a seven-story mixed-use development with 275 residential units and 5,000 square feet of ground floor commercial. And so to get that type of development at that site, the applicant was requesting a general plan amendment to a mixed-use residential designation, as well as a proposed planned development zoning district that would have been consistent with that higher-density residential designation and a Stowe Avenue road vacation. And so at the time, council provided feedback to the applicant that they would be supportive of a more scaled-down project, both in terms of size and density. And so what we're coming with tonight is just a general plan amendment preliminary application for 1530 Shuwi, and that's on the corner of Stowe and Shuwi Avenue. And so the request would be to redesignate 1530 Shuwi from multifamily low, the current general plan designation, to mixed-use develop, mixed-use downtown, which would be the proposed general plan amendment. And support for the general plan amendment would not mean support for a future project. This is a preliminary application as of right now. But if council does concur on a decision for the general plan amendment tonight and request that staff process a formal application, the applicant does intend to come back with a general plan amendment, a rezoning, and amendments to our West Downtown specific plan. And so for some context, 1530 Shuwi is a square-shaped lot on the corner of Stowe Avenue and Shuwi Avenue, and it's currently developed with a single-family home that was built in 1910. To the east across North California, you'll see downtown Walnut Creek. You'll see the Lyric there, and there are commercial businesses down that street. North across Stowe is the edge of the Almond Shuwi neighborhood, so that neighborhood is developed with lower-density, single-family homes and duplexes. Across the west, across Shuwi Avenue, are, again, Almond Shuwi neighborhood and then a senior living development. And then along the south, across Bonanza, we'll see higher, taller, commercial buildings and office buildings. This site also is within a half-mile of the Walnut Creek BART station. So the current general plan designation for 1530 Shuwi is multifamily low, which really does speak to a lower-density residential character, does not allow many commercial uses, if any, and allows a few consistent community uses. So the request would be to redesignate this as a mixed-use downtown, which would expand the allowable uses, including ground floor, and would actually support a ground-floor type character, as well as a higher-density residential use. And so if council concurs today on the general plan amendment request to submit a formal application, the applicant, again, then does to request, intends to request West Downtown specific plan amendments, like realigning the Almond Shuwi neighborhood and changes to the West Downtown districts, as well as a rezoning to be consistent with that new designation. So to expand a bit on the West Downtown specific plan, the first proposal would be to realign the Almond Shuwi neighborhood. So currently, 1530 Shuwi is within the Almond Shuwi neighborhood, and the request would be to remove it from the neighborhood and to replace it with an overlay zone. Another change would be to change the districts along this block, so along these five parcels bounded by Stowe, Shuwi, North California, and Bonanza. It's three different districts in our West Downtown specific plan. The proposal would be to consolidate that all as the Mount Diablo Olympic District, which is described as an enlivened extension of downtown Walnut Creek with mixed-use buildings with active uses on the ground floor. So there are no changes proposed to the height limits controlled under Measure A, so 1530 Shuwi is at a 25-foot-high limit, and the surrounding parcels outside the Almond Shuwi are at a 50-foot-high limit. So a change to the general plan designation, there would also be a change to the zoning. So the current is a duplex designation, D3. Again, single-family duplex uses and units, residential in character. And the proposed would be mixed-use downtown, which encourages a combination of commercial and residential uses, and really is intended to be pedestrian-oriented on that ground So as I briefly spoke about earlier, that O-23 overlay zone, if you were to take 1530 Shuwi out of the Almond Shuwi neighborhood, it would then be replaced with the O-23 Almond Shuwi overlay zone. This overlay zone was placed on properties that were basically surrounding the Almond Shuwi neighborhood, and the intent of that overlay zone is to put additional parameters on controlling massing, so having a setback, the taller your building is, and step-back requirements. And the intent behind that was, again, to respect the Almond Shuwi neighborhood. And so ahead of this council meeting, the applicants and the applicant team did do community outreach. That was on November 15th, and noticing was done by the applicant through email and passing out flyers in person. And 23 people attended as a result of that outreach. And so the applicant is here to expand a bit on that community outreach and the things that were discussed at the meeting, but just to go through it really quickly, some of the discussion topics regarded commercial, tenant parking, resident parking, and parking passes for those residents, as well as public improvements, like steps off Stowe, and whether there'd be a parking traffic study. And so this slide, you'll see there's differences between the current zoning designation, which is D3. And so that is how the current development is controlled under that D3 zoning. And the desired would be the MUD to be consistent with the MUD general plan. And so, again, under Measure A, the height limit would stay at 25 feet. And there are some different setback and, again, step-back requirements. Parking would change as well. It'd be an additional amount of parking would be required, but since this site is within a half-mile of a Walnut Creek BART station, there are no parking requirements for new development. And so if we're just focusing on density, 1530 Shuwi currently, there are three units allowed on this site. If it were to be rezoned to MUD, that unit count would increase to 17 units. And if we were looking at a future where there's a, maybe these five sites are merged together, and what density could look like on that site, under the current, because 1530 Shuwi is a separate zoning designation currently, it wouldn't be able to be merged with the other four parcels. But if we were looking at it being rezoned to MUD and having a consolidated development along that block, the base density would be 54 units, which then could translate to 57 to 135 units, depending on the level of affordability and whether community benefit was applied or not. And so tonight, council may either provide preliminary comment on the proposal and direct staff to process a general plan amendment request, or deny the preliminary application. And so I'm here for any questions you might have. The applicant is also available to speak and is here with a presentation as well.
Thank you very much. Council, do you have any questions? Let me start with Councilmember Francois, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Brittany, for the report. Very thorough, comprehensive. And I had a better sense for the numbers on that last slide that you showed in terms of units, both on 1530 Shuwi and a potentially assembled site of all four or five parcels. Just kind of stepping back, because I know that MUD is FAR, but can you, can we do in apples and apples? Like, right now, it's MFL, which is six to 14 units an acre. If it went to MUD, what's the equivalent units per acre?
Yeah, so, like you said, it's a little different because of the way it's calculated. But basically, if we're looking at the zoning, under MUD, it's one unit per 750 square feet of lot area. So this lot being 13,000 square feet approximately, versus today, the maximum on a D3 zone parcel is four, regardless of the lot size. So that can maybe contextualize it a bit.
So this doesn't seem much different. It's like 18 units an acre, if my math is right, or something like that? In terms of the overlay zone, can you talk about, the proposal is to take this out of the Almond Shuwi subarea in the specific plan, but then add an overlay, add the Almond Shuwi overlay zone to it? Can you explain what purpose that would serve?
And can you show the map again, please?
Yes, and yes. So the overlay zone was placed on properties that were adjacent to the Almond Shuwi neighborhood. And that was basically, as you can see, a 10-foot setback for buildings under 25 feet, so they had to be set back from the neighborhood. And that was because a lot of the buildings in this neighborhood are single-story, or even, you know, two-story, but two-story being 20 feet, not necessarily 25 feet. And then for any buildings that were over that 25 feet, there would be an additional setback, plus step-back requirements of an additional one foot over that 25 and 30-foot.
Regardless of whether it's front, side, rear, if it's facing the Almond Shuwi, those, it depends on the height, but those setback and step-back requirements apply? In terms of, okay. Now, you talked about the Measure A height limits and how that those could potentially be exceeded with a, under the density bonus program. Is that also true for the set, these setback and step-back requirements of the Almond Shuwi overlay zone?
Yes.
It's my understanding that unlike the previous proposal, there's no, I can ask the applicant this as well, that there's no plans for us to look at in terms of a conceptual project?
Correct, yeah. As of right now, there's no development associated with the request.
And no proposal in terms of number of units?
Nothing that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. I think that was it for my questions for now.
Councilmember Silva.
Thank you, and let's stay on the overlay slide. So I remember the whole impetus for the overlay zone were properties that were outside of Almond Shuwi that directly abutted. But it seems like what's about to happen, and maybe this can be part of our discussion as if we move this forward, that it moves through the process. I don't know why we would have an overlay zone on the two properties on Bonanza that will then abut nothing in the Almond Shuwi neighborhood.
Yeah, I think the discussion could come up, especially if we were looking at consolidating those, and whether they're going to be developed separately or together, but that's...
I mean, a road between them is a buffer.
So you're saying Stowe would be the buffer?
Stowe...
And Shuwi.
That's the question I'm asking, because now it's big, it's, it looks like that this proposal says we're going to expand the overlay zone, but we're not actually in, these properties would no longer abut. The properties on Bonanza and the two properties on Stowe Court abutted 1530 Shuwi.
Yes.
If 1530 Shuwi is no longer in the Almond Shuwi neighborhood...
Yeah.
Then now, why are we building an overlay zone that is not adjacent, directly adjacent to any of the parcels in the Almond Shuwi neighborhood?
So the council could direct that, if there were further consideration...
Direct us to study this.
Well, you could direct that that be looked at, because the purpose of the O-23 overlay was for the properties that are immediately adjacent to Almond Shuwi. So if you put the overlay in front, then the ones in the back are no longer immediately adjacent.
Okay, so it just, it became apparent as the slide came up tonight, and I went, huh. The second question, one of the members of the public during the public meeting, and I'm glad so many people attended the meeting, questioned the parking for residents, and were they, were those comments really directed at the permit parking program? That is, I see some nodding of heads. So we could also discuss that this would not be in the Almond Shuwi neighborhood, and therefore could be restricted from the permit parking program.
That would be my understanding, but I would need to look into it further.
Because they would presumably, if they were to ever become a residential project, it would have to park itself.
Correct.
Well, it wouldn't park itself, it would have to be parked.
It would have to provide parking onsite, but since they're within a half-mile BART, they technically don't.
Can you please show me the slide with the comparison? It's your last slide.
The density?
So help me out on the 25 feet. Currently, in the Almond Shuwi D3 zone, it's residential, therefore, by, under Measure A, it's required at 25 feet, which is effectively two stories.
Yes.
It would stay at 25 feet, even if we were to change the land use designation and the zoning to MUD, because Measure A locked it.
Correct, yes.
We can't rezone our way out of it. But I don't understand the second bullet in the right column, that affordable projects can exceed the height limits. I understand that part. The subsequent by three stories, when, does basically state law dictate how many stories within a half-mile of a major transit stop that can exceed our Measure A? Or is, does state density bonus law actually, is this the way state density bonus law works? Sorry, I didn't ask the question very clearly.
The city attorney can expand on it, but my understanding is, within a half-mile of BART, you can exceed up to three stories over the height limits, and that would not need a concession or waiver. And that's certain affordable projects, so in this case, 100% affordable projects. It would not be, it would not need to count as a concession or a waiver.
So that's outside of state density bon, I'm looking at our attorney, sorry.
Yeah, so that's, I'll take a look at that. The point, though, I think, is that is outside of requesting a concession or waiver. If the question is, can they request a concession or waiver to go above that, the answer to that is yes.
But they've, because it's within a half-mile of BART? What is triggering the half-mile rule, and would that be applicable even in the D3 zone, which is within a half-mile of BART?
Let me take a look at that while the council's asking other questions.
Okay, thank you. Can you review the density increase? It was on your next slide. We got, we received something in an addendum. Or maybe it was the next slide.
Yeah, so the addendum was regarding this slide.
All right, so the base density, this is an assembled, the assemblage of the five parcels, if they in fact were to come together. How many acreage, how many acres in the assemble, the, what could be assembled?
I believe it's around 42,000 square feet, which is right under an acre.
Just under an acre.
Yeah.
So basically, all of this is predicated on loosely an acre. So if it was all classified as mixed-use density, the base density would be roughly, well, it'd be one unit per 750 square feet of flat land.
Yes.
My colleague over to my left is running the calculator. 42,000 square feet divided by 750 yields, 54 roughly?
It's 58 per, units per acre, so if it's a little less, that makes sense.
So then with community benefit, this is all under our community benefits ordinance. And then this, and then with affordable units, we received a table that went a little further. Let's say they had 10% density bonus. Without a community benefit, they could get to 60 units and 87 units if they added a community benefit.
Yes, it broke it down further to 5, 10, 15, 20%.
So state density bonus triggers first, and then community benefit second, under the way we wrote our ordinance. Okay.
Yes.
I think I've got it clarified in my head.
Okay.
Thank you very much. You have no more questions? Well, Mayor Pro Tem had some.
So I wanted to go back to the change in the district, because right now, those parcels are in three separate districts. What real impacts come from that, moving them all into one district?
So it would aid in, you know, a consistent design across the parcels, and that Mount Diablo Olympic District does have some guidelines on how you lay out commercial tenants and the depth and the width required. And so it would just create a more consistent standard that the applicant then point to to develop a project.
Does the La Casy Trinity District that is along, is it, how substantially different is that from the Mount Diablo? You can tell it's been a long time since I've really looked at it, West Downtown, from the Mount Diablo Olympic, as far as how it deals with commercial?
So my recollection of it is that it's more intended for, like, mid-sized office buildings that could front North California. And so because they're only on those two parcels, I think that could be difficult development-wise, moving forward.
And so then, I think I've got the density figured out. On the parking permits, I know in the past, when we've had projects in here, they haven't gotten parking permits, so that's clear, that's not happening. On the community benefits... Yeah, okay, I think I've got that one figured out.
Okay.
I have more questions as we go, but...
Okay, are we, I don't have any questions, neither does...
I may have some after we hear from the public and everything.
Okay. That being the case, I believe it is now time for the appellate to come forward. You have 15 minutes.
I have 15 minutes?
You have 15 minutes.
Perfect. Carl Campos, LCA Architects Principal. Brittany, thank you for a really clear presentation tonight. Really was good. So, is this my, okay, is there any laser on this? Okay, good, thank you. We were here before. She made a good presentation of what we were proposing. Just as a quick review, we are within a half-mile of BART, and it's a great piece of property. It's a very important corner in downtown. And what we're proposing tonight would allow us to compact our development, stay off of Stowe, don't go into the neighborhood, and provide a plan that we can actually design with the parking that would be required for the site. So these are the parcels that the applicant, that the owner controls, and we're proposing, we're talking about the 1530 site. This is an outline of the 275 units that we presented to you, and we listened to you. It wasn't going to go. So here's the beautiful rendering that we did of that. We're proposing, probably it's going to look, be less than half of that when we're done, if we get the 1530 rezone. So it's, the Almond Shuwi neighborhood, this parcel is kind of not really, it stands on our property, it's separated by Stowe and Shuwi, it's adjacent to medium-density residential on the, on the left of that. And we're proposing that, that we be allowed to consolidate that as a transitional piece, so that we can literally design and build a building with parking that works. When we, if I go back to the, the other proposal, the site plan, the blue doesn't really lend itself dimensionally to the Walnut Creek parking requirements. And so when we, we looked at combining the two, it makes for a consolidated piece, and it's, it's south of Stowe and east of, west, east of Shuwi, and so it, it gives us a compact piece of property we can develop. And so the MUD zoning, mixed-use downtown, is intended to encourage a combination of commercial residential uses in a higher-density environment. commercial residential uses in a higher-density environment. And so if we could achieve that, we could stay south of Stowe, not go over to Stowe, and use Stowe Avenue, as Brittany presented, as, as our transitional setback to the Almanchuie neighborhood. So we would use the street to do that. When we, we don't do that, if, with the 1530 parcel, it makes it very difficult with the, the setbacks. The land that's left on our side, we can't really meet the intent of the MUD zoning. It's, it's not really developable very clearly. We got 27 units, we had underground parking, and then we had mechanical elevator and lifts. It wasn't feasible to do. These are diagrams right out of the Almanchuie setback criteria, how to do that, they're, they're well-done. And so we, we looked at the house, this is the house that's there on the property, has a garage on the left, and the property line is significantly to the south towards that high-rise building, and that's where we established the setback transitions from. And so here's a diagram looking west, or east, rather, California Boulevard, actually north, I'm sorry, California Boulevard on the right. And you can see all the setbacks that are required from the property line of, of 1530 Chuy, not from the buildings, but from the property line. And then we leave, we, when we're done with all the setbacks, we get to a 20-foot height limit, we set back more, but we, we don't have much room for parking. It doesn't meet the criteria for the parking dimensions with the city. So here's one looking Bonanza Street on the left, so that would be looking west. We, of course, we would set back off Bonanza for the height limit requirements. And then to see the big transition diagonal on the building, it's from the property line. And so it really, it really limits what we can do with the property that we have. And so we're asking that, we're diversity, equity, inclusion, this is right out of the council priorities. We want, we need some housing that could be developed, the site would be amongst the most accessible and inclusive types on the market. We're right downtown, we're within, you know, just a few minutes of Broadway Plaza, we're downtown, we're a few minutes of BART. And so it makes, it makes a lot of sense to allow us to take this corner only and develop it. So it opens up the possibility to create a dynamic new development at a key downtown intersection. It's a beautiful piece of property. We have, we're less than a half a mile from BART, 10-minute walk to BART and Broadway Plaza. So.
Here's the 100% standard.
Benefits of a consolidated site, so now we have a consol, hopefully have a consolidated site. We'll have adequate lot dimensions to accommodate onsite parking. We'll get the parking that's required for this property. We don't, we don't want to do zero parking, or, or less than what, what the market would bear here. And this would allow us to do that, if we consolidate this parcel. Opportunity to provide housing proximate to BART and retail. So this is kind of what we're looking for as our path forward. We would, we would, at this point in time, we're proposing, we don't have a plan, but we've done the math, and we would stay south of Stowe. And the MUD zoning, we actually own the parcel, control the parcel across Stowe to the north, and so we might come in with some creative solution to including that in the parcel, or maybe a future use there. But right now, we're going to do a more compact development that's south of Stowe, east of Chuy, and on California Boulevard. That was really, would really make it work well for us, as having 1530 Chuy is kind of a transition to allow us to consolidate our mass and density on that parcel. Any questions? Did I stay within my 15 minutes? Okay.
You've got time to spare. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the time. Councilmember Francois.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Campos.
You bet.
I appreciate you and, and your client kind of hearing what we said the last time and, and going back to the drawing board and, and sharpening the pencils on this. And so it's, am I correct that there's no, you don't, you said it was about, the, the plan ultimately would be roughly half the project that was proposed before?
Well, we would try, I gotta go on the record, we would try to get as many units as we can. So roughly half, maybe more, somewhere in that neighborhood, certainly not 275. That, that wouldn't work on the, on, on the land we're talking about now. Yes. But we're going to do the studies if you, if you give us the option to, to do the rezone of 1350.
So do you have some rough plans in terms of number of stories, number of units?
Yeah, we, the, the, we've looked at, we've looked at some cross-sections through the site, if we kept the 25-foot height limit on 1530, if we went a little higher. And so we could get anywhere from 135 to 200 units in this vicinity, perhaps. It has something to do with market and unit size. And so we would try to get as many as we can to make the project work financially. And keeping it to the corner and not into the neighborhood, using Stowe as our, as our, as our, as our transitional setback area, that works better for us.
I appreciate you mentioning that. So that, when you say transitional setback, and that was something the council had given comments on too last year when we saw the first, that that was important, that this particular parcel serve as a transition. Explain to me kind of the thought behind the propose, the request to go to MUD, which is a pretty high density. If it's truly going to be a transition, why not something like the MFM across the street? Explain to me kind of the thought behind MUD and how it will serve as a transition.
It serves as a transition for us because you see the MUD, the mixed site, the, on the left-hand side, the depth of those parcels and the width of those parcels, you're able to park them. And so when we use the setback, the transitional setback from 1530 onto our current MUD, a lot of our land is, a lot of the buildings are taken up with a setback. So if I can take that setback and, and realign it as a diet we showed earlier, so, so Stowe Avenue is my transitional setback to the true Almanchuie neighborhood, the home, the single-family homes across the street, then that lets us have a consolidated parcel we can develop to the, to the density and zoning that, that we could achieve there. That's, that's why we're doing it.
So I mean, just, just trying to kind of conceptualize a little more, which is really hard, just looking at, you know, squares on a map with, with labels, but are you suggesting something like an L-shaped development or wrapping around 1530 Chuy?
No, I would, we, no, we would, with, if I could get the mixed-use downtown designation on 1530, we would have a, a box that we could park appropriately, and then come up with a creative plan of unit layouts on that, within that, within that site that includes 1530.
So are you envisioning doing something similar to the Lyric across the street, where it kind of steps down to the corner, or?
Yeah, we, we would, we would, we would try to, like our previous plan, we were stepping down to the corners and, and using those transitions. It's a pretty important corner, Bonanza and California. We would do something there, but the overall layout, we would typically, we might do a central court in the center of the site, and with units at the perimeter, and stepping down at Stowe. But, but it's, it's really math, and we, we would like to, to get as, of course, as many units as possible on, on the site.
And then just, I want to leave time for my colleagues to ask questions, too. So is there another development in town that you could say you're using as a model, or that would, would be, that you're proposing to emulate?
Yeah, I like the, the, the one up the street, the Mercer. If you look at the, the site layout, the, the depth of that site, it allows, it allows for a very handsome, that's a very handsome development, in my opinion, done years ago. And it gives us the ability to do something similar to that here.
Which is about four, it's not more than four stories, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we would, we would go as, we would use, we, we would try to get as many units as possible on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Yes? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, and thank you for the work that you did on this. I had a couple of questions about, you know, mixed-use downtown does allow you to bring in commercial, but it doesn't sound like, from what you're saying, that the commercial along Stowe or Chuy is an important part of your development plan.
Yeah, the commercial, in my opinion, and that's to be, to be just, when we go through the process, we'll work that out, but, but Bonanza, a corner of Bonanza and California, and Bonanza is really the commercial area, not going towards the neighborhood. So I think we would, we would stop the commercial at, at Bonanza and, and North California in that area. We would not go up Chuy with that.
And then, when you talk about using Stowe Avenue as your buffer.
Yes.
Are you planning, are you anticipating doing the step-back setback in addition to just having Stowe Avenue there? Or are you just saying that because you have Stowe Avenue there, you can go straight up 30 feet?
Well, that'll be determined by when we go through the process, but we would like to, we would like to take advantage of Stowe Avenue as a setback. And, and we, we've done some preliminary just mathematical studies where we could step, step back some on Stowe, for sure.
Okay. And then, so you have site control of the three lots on the other side of Stowe. What are you anticipating for those as part of this project?
Well, those are, those are zoned as, as multifamily low, and so we could get some duplexes, townhomes on those, but at this current time, we're not proposing anything on those. The MUD site on California, as I mentioned, I think we'll come in with a plan or an option for a few, for a, for a master plan of where we can incorporate that, the MUD zoning along California across from Stowe. It was brought up by, and we had our community engagement hearing, if, if that would, if that MUD zoning along California could be downzoned to, to the multifamily low, and staff was clear, no, that it's.
It stays at MUD?
They said, yeah, save it as MUD. And we, we have control of the parcel just north of Stowe on California.
Just north of Stowe, so you have control.
The top, the top MUD on the right, the far right.
Oh, the one on the other side?
Yes, of Stowe.
Okay. All right, that's my questions for now, thanks.
Anybody else? Any final comments from?
No.
Oh, no, no, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
I'm just thinking about, thank you very much for the presentation, and thank you for listening to what we said last year.
Yes.
I know it was a difficult.
It was.
Hearing.
It was, but, but we, we did listen to you, and we've been, we've been struggling pretty hard to come up with a solution, and this, this really worked for us.
So the discussion we're really having here is whether this one parcel, we allow, would we consider changing the land use designation and the zoning so that it is consistent with the other four parcels?
Yes, it gives us, it's a kind of the, the existing parcel's kind of an outlier, it's not really in the neighborhood, it's, it's on, in, right up against the MUD. And if we could just, it's across from multifamily medium, right, right to the west there. And so it just gives us a really consolidated piece where we can concentrate our development there and not go farther to the north.
And again, to reconfirm, you're not looking at making any changes to the parcels that across this, across Stowe Avenue?
No.
On the other side?
No.
And you're, this, you're asking for us to consider also changing and moving the, this parcel at 1530 Chuy Avenue into the?
MUD.
Not only into the MUD, but also into the Mount Diablo La Casi? Do I, or is it, okay. Mount Diablo District, correct?
Yes.
All right, which would make it consistent with the offices across?
Correct.
Bonanza, as well as the two other parcels that are, that front Bonanza?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Checking in for the last time. Okay, all right, you.
Mayor, if I, if I may just, for a second, I wanted to respond to the question that was raised earlier by Councilmember Silva. So the, the, the change to the density bonus law in around 2019, it did allow for a right without using a concession or a waiver to have up to three stories if you're within a half mile of the transit station, but that only applies to projects that are 100% affordable. So, so.
So.
Ultimately, if it's 100% affordable, it can get to three stories essentially by right. However, if it's not 100% affordable, but they use a development waiver or an incentive, then they can also get to three stories and potentially higher, under, under just a normal incentive or concession under state density bonus law.
So they do not have a buy right because we're, unless it's 100% affordable, which would mean they'd be selling it to a 100% affordable developer more than likely?
Correct. The prod, the project itself would have to be 100%, not, not the entire project, but the project on the, on the 1530 Chuy would have to be 100% affordable.
Does that mean the 100% affordable units would have to basically sit on that? Because if they go to assemble the parcels, now it becomes a little more fluid.
The exception is written specifically for a project located within one half-mile of a major transit stop that is itself 100% affordable.
So they couldn't have the other five parcels being market rate and all of the affordability?
No, they, they could on the 1530 parcel. So if they wanted to take advantage of that, this exception, this one very limited kind of additional exception under state density bonus law, they do 100% affordable on 1530. If they're trying to get the additional three stories on 1530. If they were trying to get it on another one of the parcels that they own, that, that was possible, too, but, but you're not modifying the zoning for the other three, you're just, or the general plan is just for 1530.
So I hate doing math on the fly in my head, but if the 1530 Chuy is 13,000 square feet, and you have to do the calculation of one per 750 square feet?
Yeah.
You're going to get something in the order of?
Something like 30 units or something like that? I don't know. I, I didn't run the calculation. And remember, if it's affordable, then it'd go down to 500 square feet.
13,000?
750, 750.
17 units.
So if they have 17 units available, and they made 100% of, that's their 17 affordable units, then they could trigger a non-wavered related height increase?
Height increase, correct. Up to three stories.
And those 17 units could be counted across the whole project as well for, in terms of other waivers and concessions?
Yes, if you're treating the entire site as an integrated development.
Okay, thank you.
Me, I actually understood that, yes. Councilmember Francois?
No further questions now, thanks, Mayor.
Oh, okay. I don't see any other activity. It is now time for public comment. If you're representing a group of people, let me know now, you might, you can, and you are the sole speaker, and everybody else agrees to stay closed. Okay, then you get your standard two minutes. So come forward, please.
My name is Carlos De Rubira, I live in the Almanchuie neighborhood. And my comments regarding this application, or this proposal, is that there is no benefit being proposed here. It is just a carve-out that is being asked from you, from the Almanchuie neighborhood, for something that you, as a city council and the city, committed to, to protect the Almanchuie neighborhood. So by, by allowing this to go forward with no benefit being presented, you are just basically saying, forget the, the specific plan, forget the general plan, forget Almanchuie, let's carve it out. So I like to, to understand, if you do allow it to go forward, how is it that you are protecting our neighborhood? This is a location where things happen, at the edges of the neighborhood. Right now, when I walk out of the neighborhood, I walk down Stowe, I walk down Chuy, and it's a clear view, because there's a, there's a house in front. If you now put three stories in there, it's a wall. That changes the character of the neighborhood. That changes Almanchuie neighborhood. And it's completely inconsistent with the commitment you have made in the general plan and the specific plan. So I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Please, this is a, a business meeting, and you may agree with what he said, but nod knowingly, you can do that quietly, thank you. Is there another speaker? Okay, it's a race, hi.
My name's Doug Offenharts, I live on Shuey Avenue, I've, for the past thirty years. I wrote a letter back in November that I think is in your packet, and I've talked to a couple of you at the farmer's market over the last few months. I, I, I had my career as a developer, I sat on the Danville City Council for five and a half years. I tend to be pro-development. And yet, I think what the applicant's asking for really is to increase the profitability of the site. With a lot of jargon that, to me, doesn't make any sense. I think the site should be consolidated and developed as one piece, it makes sense. I think it can, but it's extremely hard for any person, including myself, who's in the, in the business. To try to understand what a project would look like without a plan behind it. But the idea of having, asking for rezoning and consolidation with no plan, really makes it very hard to understand. So first of all, I would ask that you ask any, consider any rezoning to be accompanied by a plan. And secondly, I would ask that you keep the existing zoning on fifteen thirty. It's a matter, I think, between three units and seventeen units, so reducing the project by, by fourteen units, plus whatever density bonuses they get. It's just a matter of, they're trying to increase the profitability for the developer, for the owner. And at the expense of, you know, a more dense, more visually impactful project at the entrance to the Shuey almond neighborhood. So I would oppose the rezoning request. Any questions?
No.
Okay.
I don't think so, but you can, no, now you can't, okay, next speaker, please, thank you.
Counsel, my name's Bill Toddoroff. Our home has been in our family for eight decades in the Almond Shuey. And I am opposed to the change in the status as it was given to us by the city council years ago. Almond Shuey is protected under the current general plan, and I'm asking that you maintain that plan and protect our neighborhood. If you allow the proposed plan changes using the petitioner's reasoning, then any parcel that is attached to or adjacent to any M U D lot could be subject to change. So where do you stop? Where is it reasonable to halt the encroachment into the neighborhood? In essence, what you would be choosing to do by granting this change in the general plan would be to erode the buffer zone. Established by the city to protect the Almond Shuey neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan De Rubira, I live at, on Almond Avenue, and I agree with what Mr. Toddoroff just said. Actually, when I was watching Mr. Campos' presentation, and he showed the parcel across from Stowe as high density. Next to it, it's got a low-density house, so where does that stop? When, if he said, I have a plan to eventually do something on that, what's gonna stop it from going to the house next door? And it's, just starts to erode our neighborhood, and it erodes the, what you guys said you would protect, which is our neighborhood. When we went in November, Mr. Campos actually showed us a big block, and if I'm correct, he said they want two hundred and fifty units on that, is what they were looking at. That's what he showed us. I'm also concerned about traffic issues, I mean, we don't know what he's gonna put there if you do approve this, we have no idea. But the chances are, just traffic-wise, and, you know, Model Ts are what used to go down our streets, so we've got really narrow streets, but to go down there, people are, in my opinion, they're gonna go down Almond to go down California to get to the parking, and that's gonna change our lives forever. And once that's done, we can't change that. So, you know, I encourage you to really look at this plan carefully and reject it, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming, anybody else? Oh, good, okay.
Good evening, councilmembers, my name is Jeremy Lam, and I also live on Almond Avenue, and I'd really just like to sort of second some of the arguments that have already been made here tonight, that. How can you allow the rezoning of an area without even an understanding of, of what the plan is for that? I mean, it sets a precedent that on the edge of the neighborhood, anybody could start to say, I need to be rezoned because I want my property to be more valuable so I can sell it to a developer. So let's, let's not rezone the area, or let's not allow that until we have a full understanding of what is proposed. What kind of property is gonna go there, we've heard everything from fifty units to two hundred units. Nobody objected, by the way, as, as you all remember, nobody objected when there was a twenty-seven unit thing being proposed, because that would not have impacted the nature of the neighborhood. And obviously, that wasn't on fifteen thirty Shuey, but again, I'd just like to really reiterate what some of my neighbors have been saying, thank you.
Thank you. Last call. Somebody's throwing up, good.
Members of the chamber, my name is Andrew Koo, my wife and I have been living on seventeen seventy-four Bonanza Street. And we are quite concerned about the proposed building at the corner of Bonanza and California. Which is already quite impacted with traffic, and more concerning is the traffic gonna be on Bonanza Street. Which is already being served by three huge commercial buildings. And the street itself is frequently being used as a crossover, I like that term, crossover between Mount Diablo and downtown area. And the traffic pattern during the day is extremely heavy, and now we're considering that there's gonna be a huge multi-unit. Building, it's going to be very impactful to the traffic pattern. So we are also concerned, and we want to encourage the city council to reject this project, thank you.
Thank you. Still looking for more public comment.
Hi, counsel, my name is Mike Blatz, and I also live in eighteen seventy-four Bonanza, and we moved here when that development was built. And we liked it because it was a mid-rise, it wasn't a super-high building, it's location to downtown, and yet, we still were close, but yet seemed far away. And the intensity of the traffic, as Andrew was explaining, we experience that all the time. And let alone the construction, which we've been dealing with, with regards to the telephone poles, the, we've been dealing with a lot of construction, everybody uses that as a thoroughfare. And it also affects the people in the Shuey and Almond neighborhood. And sometimes the traffic's so bad, we even have to cut through there to make a turn to get out. The development construction that they will do will take years, just like your, the Lyric building did. And I can see everybody, for us alone, when we pull out, there's times that we have to make a right to go to get to Mount Diablo. And one of our concerns that we have is the homeowners, there's only fifteen, you know, units in our building. And the same thing, the size, it's, it's, it's a workable size within the city without getting the super-high density that we already have in a Lyric building. And our fear is, is now the next thing gets approved, and then they work their way up to Mount Diablo where the pier one that they were potentially gonna propose something last summer, and then that got kind of pulled. And how that's gonna affect the neighborhood going into Sharp Avenue, which also backs up into that Shuey neighborhood. And I agree with a lot of the comments here, you're chipping away, that will be happened, and pretty soon, that Shuey neighborhood will be, you know, a small parcel. And I think that we have enough, a plan that we approved for nine years, the plan we just got approved with the state, and I'd like to see us stick with that, with not having. A plan not presented to us of what it would be that they want to present in, at the neighborhood of Shuey. Anyway, that's it, I'm against, against it, I hope you vote against it.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Hey, last call. Going once. Going twice. Okay, public comment is closed, and does the appellant have, does the appellant have anything to add now that they've heard comments?
I would just like to add that the, the community benefit is that we're gonna have a, an affordable component of housing here, there'll be affordable units, so that's a, a direct community benefit to, to the project.
Thank you, are there any, yes, Councilmember Francois?
So just a, a question, uh, thank you everyone for coming here and bringing your comments tonight, there were some references by certain commentators about rezoning, and I know that there's a nuance here, but if you could just elaborate on the process, that this is a, a gatekeeper or a preliminary application request. An actual rezoning could, I don't want to be too leading here, I'll let you just explain the process for us of where we are, and distinguish this from a rezoning.
Correct, so the, the, the item before the city council tonight is simply a decision whether or not to kind of reject a proposed general plan amendment. At this time, right now, and the general plan is the overarching land use document for the city, or alternatively, to allow it to be further considered. So it would go through a public hearing process before the planning commission, before it came back to the city council. There's been discussion tonight also about zoning and specific plan amendments, but that has really been, in the sense of informing the council, that if there is further consideration of a general plan amendment. The applicant has said they would bring forward these additional applications, which would also go before the planning commission, before they come back to the city council. So the council, the council's not approving any zoning this evening at all, as part of your consideration, and the only thing. That you would do is if you allow it to be further considered, then it would continue through the process.
That, that process, I know would at least include an environmental component of, of impacts to traffic and other things, would it also necessarily include a plan? Would the, would the applicant at that point have to show what they're proposing to do on these consolidated parcels?
So if, if there, so the council could request that, if, if you wanted to, but if all they were seeking was a zone change. And a specific plan amendment to change the boundaries, as, as was shown in the staff presentation earlier, that wouldn't necessarily require a plan if the council. Wanted to request that the applicant come forward with a plan as part of the process, the council could do that, but. The, at least the proposals that have been, not proposals, but the proposed process that's been discussed by the applicants and I, doesn't itself require an actual site plan for the project.
Okay, and then maybe one for the community development director, two, or planner, you know, was any consideration given to kind of any alternatives? That the, the, you know, the M U D was proposed, but there's obviously planned development, zoning, or there's the mixed, the multifamily medium across the street, or any other kind of thoughts given to. A designation that might more precisely match the transitional nature of the parcel? Or are you just responding to what the applicant proposed, is what I think you're gonna say, but.
Yeah, you're correct, we didn't have a dialogue about alternatives at this stage, it was really just working on their request and what they were requesting, which was the M U D designation.
So if, looking at our plan and designations, is there another zone or designation that you view as being more of a transitional zone that would? If we can't, you know, if we don't have the assurances that the Almond Shuey overlay would actually be applied to this parcel that would accomplish that purpose?
So Britten, if I may, I, I think in trying to work together with the applicant. They have something in their knowledge base about what their desired outcome is in terms of numbers, number of units and density and so forth. And we've certainly, you know, have been fully available to them to be able to evaluate and assess that, but I think that, you know, in, in the variety of conversations, it's become pretty apparent that this was the path that they wanted to pursue. And that they're aware of the other paths, but it wasn't going to yield the level of density or units that they desired.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wilk.
Thank you, so just a couple of questions, first, while I've been on the city council, I'm trying to remember this now for the seven years, I don't recall another request to do a rezoning without a plan. Is this something that, I, I may be wrong, there may be something that came, but I, I usually, there's a plan associated with it. Is this something that's unusual to have a, a, a preliminary application for a, or a rezoning process without a plan?
So the council's probably heard, would be three, four, five, general plan requests of this sort. It's, some of them have come through with, with plans, Councilmember Wilk, but I don't know that I would characterize it necessarily as unusual or usual, because it is at the general plan stage. And you don't always see a plan, yeah, an actual site plan, a development plan at the general plan stage. Some developers will come in and they have a vision of what they want to do, and it's pretty well articulated in their own mind, and they will come in with a plan, and they'll say. We'd like a general plan amendment because this is what we want to build right here, that, this is the proposal we want to build. But it, general plan amendments are, are processed without site plans fairly regularly in cities.
Okay, thank you, and then in regards to the area itself, is this, is this lot considered part of the buffer zone, the actual buffer zone going into Almond Shuey? Or is it considered part of Almond Shuey, or is it on the outskirts of the buffer zone of Almond Shuey, I'm trying to get an idea of that.
It's a part of the Almond Shuey neighborhood currently, so there's a line around set of parcels, and it is within that Almond Shuey neighborhood.
Okay, so it's within the buffer zone, or like the transitionary period going into Almond Shuey?
No, it's, it's in the Almond Shuey neighborhood.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Mayor Protim, thank you, um, so I want to just ask a couple of questions, so I'll make sure I've got this firmly in my mind. When we talk about community benefits in two different ways, one is community benefits as laid out in the specific plan. Which is a very specific, or a very discreet kind of, if you do this, then you can get this additional height. But we've also talked about community benefits writ more large whenever somebody comes in for a general plan amendment that increases the value of their lot. We have in some, in several instances, looked for the applicant to bring in something. In a very generic sense, that to benefit the, the people of the city in exchange for that increase in the value of their lot.
That is correct, the council has both adopted a formal community benefits policy for the two downtown districts. As well as for general plan amendments that have come through to the council, the, the council has looked. To see whether the applicants would bring forward some other type of benefit. That they would propose as part of the project, and that's taken various forms, sometimes it's financial payments, sometimes it's additional affordable housing, sometimes it's, it's infrastructure improvements. There's various things that the council has looked at, but that, the council has looked at that on general plan amendments, and, and applicants have come forward with that in the past.
Okay, and then as far as what we're, you know, because we're at the point where we're just giving them a license to hunt for the general plan amendment, as opposed to the actual general plan amendment. In describing what we would want to see when they come back to us. I think you have said that they, we could ask them to bring in a specific development proposal, can we, is that, am I?
I, I would characterize it, if the council would like to see site plan options. I would characterize it, if the council would like to see site plan options, you can do that. Bringing in a specific development plan proposal might be more than some developers are willing to do. If they're actually the developers, they could do that. But, but the council could, you know, you have a pretty clean slate when you're looking at a general plan amendment, and you can ask for what the council believes it needs to understand to be able to make the decision as to whether you grant a general plan amendment. This is your, when councils act on general plan amendments, they have a very broad legislative authority. Keep in mind, 1530 Shuwi, as I understand it, is not a property that was kind of increased in density in the housing element, so it maintained the same density.
Correct.
It maintained the same density. So, so the council is really riding with, the council has options in terms of how they wish to pursue this.
And so requesting a site plan, a general, a generic site plan is a potential. Is requesting a development agreement also a potential?
The council can request a development agreement. You've done that on other general plan amendments, as the council's aware. Development agreements under state law are voluntary on both sides, and so the council can request, and they can consider whether or not they've received it, but the city can't force a development agreement on a property owner.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Silva.
One of the issues is really what this parcel will look like, but also what will be visible from the Almond Shuwi neighborhood as it stands today. So let me go to what is physically possible in terms of, well, just without considering ROI and cost. Right now on the parcels that are MUD, what are the heights?
Fifty feet.
Pardon me?
Fifty feet.
And that includes the two parcels that are to the east of 1530?
Across Stowe.
Not across Stowe.
Why don't you pull up the map?
They should be numbered. So the parcels that are on Stowe, but are to the east of 1530 Shuwi. What are the, well, on the other, the four that are in orange, what are the heights?
Fifty feet.
Fifty feet, including the two on Stowe?
Yes.
So, and, in a theoretical world, those heights can go taller under measure A, B, if they get at an affordable level that necessitates waivers. This is without 1530 in the mix.
Under state density bonus law.
Under state density bonus.
I don't know. Is there any available capacity under measure A for the, are there lots, or are they already at their measure A limit?
I wouldn't know.
The lots that the council's referring to right now, I don't know them. Chip, do you know that? That's it, they're right at the limit right now?
They're right at the limit.
Okay, so the only way they could exceed is through state density bonus law.
Right. So right now, if I'm recalling what I see as I come around the bend, right at Almond, where Almond Court and Almond, or Shuwi Avenue merge, when I'm looking toward Mount Diablo, the reason I'm able to see Mount Diablo isn't just because of a single-story family home, it's because all of the other parcels are working at a single-story level. So no matter, and I'm just going to be very blunt, no matter what we do tonight, we cannot protect that view, because those other parcels are, have a height, have a 50-foot height limit without any state density bonus law, et cetera. So that's the reality as I see it. It doesn't, it's where my brain is cogitating. So what are they allowed to do on a D3? If it just stayed D3, what's the constraints? Does state density bonus law apply to a single-family residential parcel?
So my understanding is that it kicks in at five units. So once you develop five or more units, you can apply state density bonus. So on 1530 Shuwi, the maximum residential density is three units.
The maximum is three units, but can I trigger state dens, uh, density bonus law?
No.
Developed individually. If you have common ownership and you come in with a common development, then you don't have a residential development that's limited to three. So if you're only talking about building on 1530 alone, that, that may not invoke state density bonus law, but if you have common ownership of the lands and you come in with a common development, then you have a residential development that's more than five units, and that's the threshold under state.
Across the multiple parcels.
Correct.
Okay.
But, to the city attorney, no more than, under that scenario, no more than three on, on 1530 Shuwi?
Correct. You'd calculate the density bonus off of the maximum that would be allowed under the general plan, which would be three for that parcel.
Yeah.
But once I calculate it, let's say I get a fourth unit, am I allowed to ask for a waiver to exceed the height limit?
Yes, you are. Yes, you are. And that would be true if you invoke state density bonus law. So from a practical standpoint, if the development that came in was only on 1530, you may not be able to do that. But if it's combined through common ownership of the land or common development as one project, then, then you would be able to, to invoke the rights that are granted, incentives and concessions under state density bonus law.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I've got a kind of touchy-feely question, which is, what I've heard from the people who are around this particular lot, they just want their neighborhood to be very much what they, it is right now. Can you, can you imagine a building that goes on the lot that manages to respect the kinds of housing and, and not maybe make it exactly the same, but is respectful of the neighborhood? Do you design, am I asking a question you can understand enough to answer?
Sure.
Okay, well then come and answer it, please.
In our previous proposal, that was 275 units, that was, we're not going to do, we did have, they did, we took the first three floors of those buildings, and we made them look like residential homes. And so for the architectural perspective, most people are looking like this, and so the ground floor all the way up Shuwi and wrapping around was, was going to be, to look like a single-family homes. And so, yeah, we could do that on 1530, the same thing. We could keep that character at the, at the ground floor level, and then do it, but step back, do what we would do on that site. Does that answer your question?
It does. I'm really impressed.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I believe that we're ready to have a, bring this back.
Oh, nope, we don't. Building on Councilmember Francois's questions and the mayor Protem's. Do we have the ability to say, we won't, we won't say yea or nay about even considering this until we see a site plan that addresses, not a site plan, schematics, that address the issues that have been mentioned by the neighbors?
So essentially to continue this, the consideration that you're doing right now until you see a site plan? I just want to make sure I'm understanding that.
I don't like the word site plan. What I mean is drawings that look like.
A concept drawing.
A concept.
Yeah, yeah. So if the council wanted to see a concept drawing before it even makes this initial determination tonight, you could ask that of the applicant, and if they can provide that, you could continue action on this until after you receive that. So that is an option for you. The council could also ask for that if you let it go forward and have them presented to the planning commission as well, too. But if the council wants to see it first, you could, you could request that of them. I would recommend you hear from the applicant on that.
Really, we have three, three potential options here. One of which is to say no, one of which is to say yes, and one of which is to say, come back.
Right. So the third one would be that you continue what you're considering tonight, have them come back, and then you make the decision as to whether you want to deny it at that point, or allow it to continue to be processed. You are, this is a legislative action, so you're not operating under some of the time limits that exist for adjudicatory action. So you do have, you do have some discretion here.
And there is actually a fourth option, which is to say, yes, we will consider it, but at the time that it is considered, you must have a site plan.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going back to, this is now council discussion time, and I would dearly love to hear somebody step forward, and I'm looking at all the prior planning commissioners. Okay, Matt, you're.
Okay. Thank you, mayor. And thank you, everyone, again, for coming out tonight. Thank you to Mr. Campos for hearing us the last time. I think what probably, some of us are struggling with, including myself, is it's difficult to say yes without, go forward and study, you know, go through the process without seeing an actual plan of what's proposed. And so I'm falling, I'm falling in the category of come back, not, not no, but come back, show us what you're, what you're proposing. I understand it's a proposal to maximize the number of units, and I, and I get that. And I know we're in a housing crisis, and we need housing units. It's this, this set of parcels is adjacent to a very special neighborhood. So, and I know you recognize that, and you pulled back the original proposal so it didn't go across the street, and I think that was significant. But I still think there needs to be some significant thought and care given to even the scaled-down proposal. I have to say, I'm not convinced the MUD is the right designation for this. Maybe we leave the general plan designation as it is and consider, consider with a plan, a planned development zoning, so that we, the city and the commissions have some control and discretion over how this project ultimately looks, feels and develops. So that, that's where I'm landing on this currently.
Councilmember Silva.
I agree. And I really appreciate everyone coming in to say something. We need housing, but we also need to make this, if it were to go in that direction, transition appropriately. And right now, some of the words coming out of the proposer's mouth are, we're going to maximize, we're going to maximize, we're going to maximize. On the other side, we can't protect that view because it's not, even at 20, a 25-foot house, two stories with a pitched roof would, could potentially block the view, and whatever they build on Bonanza and California will block the view of Mount Diablo. So I think we have to be realistic in how we approach this, and this is one of those where, how do you divide the baby? The, so I'm willing to let this come back to us with a site, with a concept drawings from the street, not hanging up in the air with a drone, that shows what all of these neighbors would see, standing at Almond Court and Almond, and how can it be, make it look like it belongs in the neighborhood, the same way the multi, the small multifamily project that sits between Heritage Point and the office building directly across the street on Shuwi, how that integrated into the neighborhood.
Councilmember Wilk.
This, the area here is, is where we are looking as a council to be able to mitigate climate change, make sure that people are in their cars less, be able to walk to areas, walk to Bart, downtown, Broadway Plaza. And so the location of it is ideal for that. Taking into account, of course, the fact that it is also next to the one protected neighborhood that we have in Walnut Creek, I, I look very hard at any type of general plan amendments or any kind of rezoning. And while I, and I understand where this, the plan would be something that could potentially be amendable. So it's not something where I would be looking to deny this. I would want to see this come back and go through the process and be able to see what kind of plan development would there be. This could very well work out, and, and it is in an area where it should be able to work out, right on California. But I think it's important to be able to see what that plan looks like, as opposed to something that is hypothetical at this point. I think that's, that's fair to the city, it's fair to the city council, and mostly important, it's fair to the residents. So that's where I'm coming down.
Mayor Protem.
And I appreciate everybody coming tonight. I appreciate the applicant putting the work into this. A couple of things that I would be looking for, I think Councilmember Francois laid out a direction that I could support. There's a couple of things that are easy to put in that, because it sounds like it's what you guys are already envisioning. One of my apprehensions about using the MUD is the potential for commercial along Stowe or that back part of Shuwi, and I think that's not something you're interested in. So coming back with something that says that that's what you're, you're doing. Looking at a long Stowe, making sure that you have a step-back, setback-type arrangement there that respects our commitment to protecting the Almond Shuwi would be something I would be looking for. Looking at, because we have both community benefits as the formal, you know, west downtown plan, but also what, if we move forward with this proposal, is there in it to benefit, you know, the residents of the city? That would be something I'd be looking for. And, you know, it doesn't need to be, you know, 60% engineering design drawings, but a conceptual site plan that lays out massing, massing what the neighbors will see and commitments that you're making to the architectural elements that will make it fit within the neighborhood. I think I could go with that.
Okay. You have a very good record for being respectful of neighborhoods. And one of the things that I have to constantly remind myself is, change is inevitable, make it the best change you can make it. And I think, I think that this corner is, if you will forgive me, more than a little dog-eared on the California side. It's, it's, it's really a drag on the city. And I think it's a chance that we can come up, come up with, I'm not going to, I'm not creative, so I'm not going to come up with anything other than finishing this sentence. But I think we can make something, make that corner be something that introduces the Shuwi neighborhood coming from California, and, and, and kind of lets it know that this is the, this is the last of the big changes that are going to go there. If we leave it there and, and watch it disintegrate, I think we have a dear expense to the city and even to the Shuwi neighborhood. So this might be one thing that can save it and protect it even better than not having anything scary at all. So I agree with everyone, with what everyone said ahead of me, and so I think we have a conclusion. Do we need a formal motion?
Yeah, we would, staff would recommend that the council entertain a motion. And I would, it, it sounds to me like the majority of the council was supporting the direction that Councilmember Francois was indicating, so it might be appropriate that he make the motion.
It is, you know, without getting too prescriptive on this, I think we're just moving to continue this item to a date uncertain and asking the applicant to consider the feedback that we provided.
I'm fine with that, if that, we understand that. And I, and to be clear, individual council members had somewhat individual requests. There was a consensus, I think, for a concept plan.
Yes.
But there were some additional asks by some of the council members, and so as part of Councilmember Francois's motion, if you, if you agree, we would consider those to be part of the plan. to be part of the motion as well, too.
Yeah. So, so let, maybe we should be a little more specific. So, continue to a date uncertain with the primary feedback, given that there'd be concept drawings and that, that the proposal be reconsidered in terms of the ask, that I, in terms of either a planned development zoning or some type of general plan designation that allows the city to retain flexibility and control over this site and the adjacent sites.
I'll second that.
All right. Rob call, please.
Councilmember Francois?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Mayor Haskew?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. We have come to the end of the meeting, and we are adjourned until the next meeting.
Thank you.